Okay, very good. We're ready to go. Good evening, everyone. It's a study session this evening, June 3rd. The Planning Commission. We'll let, ask Aaron to take role.
Commissioner Bartlett?
Here.
Commissioner Cohen?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Kentner?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Peters?
Here.
Commissioner Stone?
Here.
All members are present. You may continue with the study session.
Thank you very much. So I think what we will do is turn it over to, to Roger, I think. Roger, you're doing the presentation or is Chaney?
We're gonna have a couple of people. I can explain that if you like. I can start it up.
Sure.
Okay. Again, I wanted to introduce Chaney Bostick, who is our urban, who has been an urban design consultant for this project. And we asked Chaney to participate in the meeting because she can talk a little bit about some of the urban design issues specifically. For the presentation, we're gonna, I'll give most of the presentation, but Christie will also participate as well. So what we thought we'd do is just start with the presentation. Now, this has been a presentation that some of you have seen at least parts of a few times, but we have new commissioners. We have relatively new commissioners, so we would give, I think, rather, Aaron decided giving a little bit more information so everyone has the background on this. So Christie, you could start the slides.
Roger, before we start the slide, would you mind giving just a little background of how we got here?
Yes, yeah. And I will actually as part of the presentation.
Oh, is it? Okay, then.
Yeah. It is how we got here.
Then go ahead and proceed.
And I think before we get into the kind of details, I wanted to kind of stress that the Union Neighborhood Vision Plan is really a high-level look at land use and design. Typically, for neighborhood plans, we've looked at the range of issues, but here we're looking at land use and design. And then implementation details would be the next step with developing and adopting the design guidelines and land use changes to the zoning ordinance, and that would be through a public process. And here's where I'm kind of getting into a little bit of background and jump in if you're not getting enough, but this really is the fourth meeting with the Planning Commission about the vision plan. We had two public hearings last fall. And then the Planning Commission requested that we continue with study sessions, with one study session based upon wanting further information. And then with new commissioners, it was determined that we'll have another study session, and that's why we're here tonight. We have scheduled a public hearing. That is the next step. And we've scheduled it for July 15th, and we can talk about commissioner availability at the end of the meeting, but it it is scheduled for the 15th. And here with the next slide, or the agenda, what I'll do is give a little background and context, talk about previous planning efforts, how this fits within the development dialogue process, go over the Union Vision Plan, and then talk about next steps. So we'll have a little bit of background here first. There has been, and some of you have seen this before, but there has been considerable planning in this area over the past several years. There's been the Connectivity Plan, a transportation study in 2018. And so there have been other additional studies, but this is really looking at land use and design issues. And here's kind of a timeline that kind of puts things into context, hopefully a little bit, showing the focus. And again, the Vision Plan focuses on land use and building and site design. We'll go to the next portion. The development, and it really stems out of the development dialogue process, which is looking at, as you can see on the slide, is looking at the range of issues. And on the left-hand side, you can see the zoning, citywide zoning changes. So the development dialogue process is looking at the, as it has looked and it's continuing to look at the entire city. There was a desire to, by the council and others, to look at area-specific plans where there be, where there may be more chance of development. So that's what this area-specific plan is. Let's go to the next part of that. So it was determined that the Union area would be the first area that would be looked at in terms of there are some changes that apply in our logical for the entire city, but there are different areas within the city that might need a closer look, that might need some special kind of looking at the issues that vary specifically for an area. So the idea is to start with the Union, with the Union area. And again, the kind of three pieces of this, there's the Vision Plan, which we're talking about tonight, which is again, a high-level look at land use and zoning, land use zoning and design with a real specific focus on design. And we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail, but the Vision Plan only kind of sets the high-level vision. Any changes to the zoning overlay, which could be, would be proposed, as well as design guidelines, our next steps, and those would be public. Those would involve the Planning Commission and City Council in a, in a public process. So we're really at the first step of potentially, potentially three steps. Again, to talk a little bit about the Vision Plan. Again, it's, the idea is to establish a vision and to look at high-level issues. The zoning overlay would be an overlay, an implementation tool of, say, addressing land use changes, building heights, open space, that would be specific to the Union area. So if that's the next step, it would be very specific to Union. And again, design guidelines are an implementation tool that would really look at building and site design on a very specific basis to ensure quality design. So there are more steps to come, and this would be, this is intended as a first step. So let's go to the next slide. This is the area that we're looking at. It is bordered by Alameda on the south, Six Avenue on the north, roughly Cedar, Van Gordon on the west, and the Federal Center on the east. It's it's consistent with other planning efforts, and it's also where the areas of mixed-use zoning occur as well. So that, that's the focus of the plan. Okay, next. So the, the process started with, and Christie, I don't know where you would jump in here.
Yep, sorry.
I think.
Hold on, I needed to unmute myself. So let me go back in and I will, I will talk about the process.
Yes, Christie will talk a little bit about the process and the public involvement piece as well, so. We wanted to shift gears a little bit here.
Okay. So to gather input from the community, five meetings were held at the Hampton Inn near Union Boulevard. During each meeting, we asked attendees to participate in a survey to provide their input on specific topics. The first two meetings focused on vision and function. The third meeting focused on site and building design. And during the last two meetings, we presented recommendations and asked for participants' feedback. The same survey questions and resources were also available online at Lakewood.org/UnionVision. So here's a series of maps showing how the community was notified about these meetings, and then also the Vision Plan process. Two postcards were mailed to more than 2,000 residents and business owners within the planning area boundary. The same two postcards were mailed to the contact persons for the HOAs and neighborhood organizations within or adjacent to the planning area boundary. Eight posts on Nextdoor were made to 20 neighborhoods announcing upcoming meetings. The posts reached approximately 6,500 individuals. And finally, Lakewood staff regularly attended the Union Corridor Professionals Group and announced upcoming meeting dates for this project. The Union Corridor Professionals Group also included the Union Vision meeting information in its e-newsletter. So here is the resulting outreach map. As Roger has mentioned, there will be more opportunities for community members to share their input during the next phases of this process. The Vision Plan documents what was heard during the initial phase. The process is not over, it's just beginning. There will be more outreach and community meetings as we begin to develop the zoning overlay and design guidelines. This slide shows the two postcards that were mailed and the postcard, or the poster that was shared with businesses and organizations to post in common areas. And then here are a few images from the community meetings. Roger will now jump back in to discuss the survey responses and recommendations.
Okay. At the first meeting, the first meeting focused on vision and land use. And the survey asked participants to complete the sentence, "In 20 years, the Union Neighborhood should be replaced that." And here is the listing of some of the responses. And there are many key words and phrases that people use to describe their vision over the next 20 years for, for the Union area. I think the words vibrant, safe, sustainable, walkable, unique restaurants, employment opportunities were some of the more common things, and these aren't, this isn't the exclusive list, but these are some of the common responses that were received. So as a result of that, a vision statement was developed and talked about at, at the meetings. And I'm gonna just read it. I know y'all can read, but I'll just read it anyway. It says, "In 20 years, the Union Neighborhood is envisioned to be a diverse, thriving community that is walkable and safe. A variety of restaurants and retail make it a destination for residents and visitors alike. Thriving employment and services support those who live and work there. The area is easy to navigate and travel through. The natural beauty of ample landscaping and open space offers tranquility in this vibrant corridor." So ways to achieve the vision, again, land use characteristics, site and building design, and mobility and accessibility are, those are the tools that can achieve the vision. And the, the plan is organized into the recommendations for these three categories, and you can see the page numbers for reference there. So the first thing we'll talk about is land use characteristics. Our project is fairly, project area is fairly large, but there are three really small, smaller sub-areas that emerged based on their key characteristics. The land use permissions are defined in the zoning ordinance on the right-hand side of the slide. There are eight different zone districts within the entire planning area. And the slide shows again the three sub-areas. The northernmost defined as more of a gateway. The middle area more as a mixed-use neighborhood, and then the, the lower area near Alameda, more of a local center. So during the first two meetings, participants were asked to describe their vision and desired land use for the three sub-areas, and here are just some of the responses that were heard for each of these areas. They're pretty extensive, but they're listed in the plan as well. But here are just some of the responses for the gateway, the mixed-use neighborhood, and then the local center. So based on the responses, recommendations were drafted to either suggest, and neither, these are suggestions that would need to be included in the next step to either remove or add a specific land use for each sub-area. The green plus means adding, and the the X means suggesting removing the land use. And these recommendations, again, are only recommendations, and would be discussed at the zoning overlay process. And you can look at the Vision Plan for the full list of zoning and land use recommendations on the page numbers. And we included this slide, and I hope you can read the entire slide, including the bottom, to keep in mind, all of the, these are all of the land uses that are currently allowed for the MCT Zone District in existing zoning. So the recommendations in the bottom right-hand corner are recommendations, only remove a few land uses based upon what was heard, feedback from the, the planning process. So we included this as one example of kind of the magnitude of what's being suggested for land use changes. The second tool is through site and building design. We get, okay, and during the third meeting, participants were asked about their preferences for building styles, priorities for developments, streetscape, plazas, et cetera. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chaney, who really can explain this a lot better than I can.
Thanks, Roger. So, so I will talk about how in the, in the process for the Vision Plan, we talked to the community about design. This was the, in particular, the workshop that was centered around design. You can see all of the posters there that had, that were designed to be very visual. And when we talk about design, you know, this is where things can get personal. When I say design, often it's, it's a lack thereof that sparks a fire in people in new communities when you start to see new development go up and and there isn't that predictability, and it doesn't seem to fit in. Lakewood is not alone in this, working in everywhere from Denver to Flagstaff, Arizona, to Redmond, Washington on these issues right now. You know, growing cities are experiencing this all too often where design becomes the main topic. And so new buildings go up and, and they're, you know, too boxy and they don't fit in, or they're, you know, the materials don't, are blah, or they don't, you know, they're, they're these enclaves and they don't give back to the community. And so it's really important to have these conversations and to set a framework and to have a vision plan. And honestly, developers want that predictability as well. So having a vision plan that really describes the future vision of an area is, is, is really important for that future design and something that, that the community, Union area doesn't really have today. So this is an exercise. I'll go through some of the findings. So this was a survey exercise, and it was really fun. There were fun conversations happening at this meeting. People getting fired up, and I think it was a lot of fun for the community to participate in. So in this meeting, we asked some big questions. So on those posters that you saw, we had everything from like asking, you know, what building types are appropriate for, for Union? And we had heard that people, you know, in, in previous meetings, they really saw it as a retail and entertainment hub for Lakewood and residential and employment. So we broke it into kind of different, different areas. I'll stay on this slide for a little bit. We also asked, what are your priorities for new development? So we asked about, you know, when new development comes into Union Boulevard, what are your priorities for those development? Do you want affordable housing or better landscapes? Do you want it, more activity, more open space, sustainable features? You know, parking? And, and what do you want it to look like? What, what's the, what's the appropriate mass and scale for this area? You know, what style, from traditional to eclectic, do you think is appropriate? Facade compositions, ground floor design, materials and color? And what are your priorities for street design and open space? And so I'll go through some of the the findings from that, but the, these are the conversations and, and that we set forth at that meeting. So this is a summation of findings. So in terms of facade articulation, the majority thought that a more symmetrical, symmetrical and proportional facade was, was appropriate for Lakewood in this, in this particular area. Transparency should include, they liked a mix of glass and solid building mass, they thought should be varied and stepped down in scale to, to streets and to, to have a more human scale to the, to the development. Next slide. And we also found that they, they preferred to have a varied mix of roof forms and height. So rather than, you know, which sometimes base zoning can, can spit out these formulas that make the same, you know, buildings, you'll see buildings that look the same after, one after the other in new development. So they thought it was really important to have a mix of building heights in new developments to activate the ground floor and really bring design features like landscaping and architectural features to the ground floor. In terms of color, the more earth tones were preferred, so not, you know, nothing too crazy. Material composition, we asked, we showed a bunch of different pictures for this, and people tended to like, you know, keeping it simple, two to three materials, again, not too crazy, but also not too blah. And that stone masonry should be a primary material. Durability was important. In terms of looking at the public realm, so kind of outside of the building, landscaping, street trees were really important. I remember having lots of conversations about just street trees, how they can help with the feeling of a place and make it feel safe and more comfortable. Water quality, you know, using landscape to treat water quality on-site was important. And connectivity was a huge thing that came up. And so really allowing new development, encouraging new development to include shared use paths, and that means like just wider sidewalks that people feel comfortable walking with their children, perhaps with a stroller, maybe biking with a burly. Next slide. Walking paths. So knowing that there's a lot of employment in the area and that people get out on their lunch breaks, they thought that walking paths were really important to the area and kind of making those connections throughout the neighborhood. Also, for the same reasons, providing seating areas and public plazas or small pocket parks that people can have that respite and get to nature when they're, when they're up in their office buildings all day. And then also activating public space with art and sculptures to having, you know, new development contribute to public space by, by offering those moments of beauty. And so, you know, the Vision Plan, again, it's, it's at a high level, and as Roger stated, the, the next steps are where you get into really regulating that design. And so what we wanted to pull out from the community was what's important and what fits in and what's appropriate for the Union Neighborhood. And so through all of the public feedback, the kind of visual preference survey that, and findings that I just went through, we boiled that down into some important design principles so that they, they fit into the Vision Plan. They're not too specific. They're not regulatory, but they offer a vision for the area in terms of design. And so principle one, being contextual, that buildings should respond and respect their adjacent neighbors and uses. Buildings should be unique. They should be expressive and lively. So in, in the plan, we go into more detail on these, but at a high level, just, you know, lively. So they should offer a variety of experiences. They should really engage the, the ground-street level and provide a mix of uses that, that sustain the, the neighborhood into the future. And then principle four, being sustainable, and this is, we really talk about, you know, sustainability and building design, but really thinking about that at a further level, like reusing buildings, for example, and that sites should include those sustainable elements as well, such as water quality. And so I think that, you know, then the next step that Roger will talk about, and those are, those will be our next steps, is then taking these high-level principles and then manifesting that into the regulatory process, which will be zoning and design standards and guidelines.
Okay, next slide. Just wanted to touch on, the Vision Plan also recommends, makes recommendations for mobility and accessibility that really reinforce the recommendations identified in the 2018 transportation study. And that's on page 36. I think we've stressed this, but we wanted to kind of bring back that initial graphic. And if you look towards the bottom again, stressing that the, the Neighborhood Vision Plan is a high-level look at concepts related to land use and design in the project area. And again, the concepts would be implemented in subsequent actions by the Planning Commission and City Council. And to bring this slide back again, the study session is an opportunity for final discussion and input by the Planning Commission before the plan goes, before the Commission had a hearing on July 15th scheduled. So this really concludes our, our presentation part of the meeting. And with that, we'll turn it back to the Commission for discussion and questions. Back to the chair.
Thank you. Maybe we could very good, perfect. Thank you, Christie. I'll just open it up for Commissioner questions. Yes, we have two new members who, this is all new too, so. Feel free, anyone, you don't have to raise your hand, just, just unmute him.
I have a question that, that maybe one of the staff can answer. I have here the hard copy of the Union Neighborhood Vision Plan from October 2019. And I know there's been some update because, and I was glad to see this too, on page 37, there was a new connective framework map, and I had recommended that we update it. And it was updated, and I'm pleased to see that. Has there been any other updates that you might want to draw our attention to in the, from the October 2019 hard copy?
I can speak to this really quick. Yes, you're right. We did update the map, the Connectivity Framework Map as requested. The only other update that we did is we updated the Planning Commissioner acknowledgements, since we did have
the membership.
Planning Commissioners joined us, so we updated that as well.
Thank you.
So I have some questions about, you know, parts of the plan. And then I have maybe observations and actually probably a request that's kind of overall. So I don't know how you wanna, how do you want to go through this? Do you want to, Dale, do you want to have a portion here set aside for us to go through and questions that came up as we were going through the plan? How do you want to, how do you want to proceed?
Well, that's what I would like to do first, is just, so everyone feels like they're up to speed, understands what, you know, the, the purpose of the plan is and what the recommendations mean and what our role in this is. I think that's where we want to, where we want to, where we want to start. So maybe, you said you had a recommendation? Maybe we should wait with that until everybody feels comfortable with, with what's going on. I will add. Oh, well, so Teresa, why don't you go ahead? Because you, you said you had a couple of comments, requests.
I've got, I've got a few questions as I was reading through the plan. And so I've actually got a bunch of questions, so raise your hand when you're tired. I was just wondering. Thank you, first of all. Let me, let me say thank you for all your work on getting the public input. It was a lot of meetings. I mean, you guys, I know it's every single meeting.
every single meeting is a lot of work. And, and um, and I appreciate the way you laid it out. It's, it, it's very clear that, that you tried to engage everyone um, that you could. I was just wondering, now, once the plan is done, now that, now that we have this draft, have we reached out through these stakeholders through the same channels and venue? You were doing postcards and you were going and meeting. Have we gone and taken this plan back to those venues where they got used to seeing you and said, how'd we do?
Well, I'll, I'll start on that one. Kristi, jump in. I think um, since this is a study session, we you know, we posted and, and we were advertising a meeting. When we go to a public hearing, we will be doing that. We'll be getting back to the, we used um, the Lakewood Together website during the process, and we would notify all the, the attendees and, and use that process again to um, make sure everyone that was involved and interested is notified of the public hearing. So that would be, is part of that particular step.
I just, and I, I guess I'm just wondering about, it would be like if um, if you and I have been texting back and forth for a week and all of a sudden you call my landline. I just, I, you know, we, we heard last time that people and we, when we see in the public comment that's been posted, that some of them feel like the plan does not reflect what they said. And I, maybe one more public meeting out there with them, not like this, because this is a totally different channel than what you guys uh, started with. I'm just wondering, can we wrap it up with that same kind of, just go meet them in the same venue? Send the postcards, do what you communicate in the way you did before to get their input, to check, how'd we do?
Well, I just wanted to add really quick that um, our last two meetings um, last year were, so we first presented draft recommendations with the community. Um, and these are the recommendations that um, are in the plan. So we presented draft recommendations, and then based on their feedback, then the last meeting, the ver- the fifth meeting, um, we presented final recommendations and we had a survey, so we gathered their feedback that way. So um, we did, we did ask for feedback on the recommendations at two different meetings.
Uh, what, I'm sorry, Travis, was a draft of the plan available at those meetings? A draft plan available and distributed to the public?
So we, we had just asked, um, we had just presented the recommendations at those meetings. And then based on the feedback that we received, then we um, compiled everything into the, the vision plan. And then we uploaded the draft vision plan on Lakewood's, uh, Lakewood Together.
I have a question. Can I jump in here?
Sure.
Um, kind of, you know, following up on, on uh, the questions Johann's and uh, or Christopher Coens and Commissioner Stone's questions about um, transportation and public input. We heard a lot in, in the public input and read a lot, uh, including um, the Lakewood speaks for this meeting with regard to concerns about uh, traffic impacts of this proposed plan. And my question kind of goes to the uh, prioritization. I understand that funding would, one way funding would be achieved would be through um, the capital improvement and preservation plan. Uh, is there any way within the, the scope of that plan to prioritize trans- needed transportation infrastructure upgrades for Union Vision? The, the vision plan indicated a number of different intersections and some new road and a bridge over Highway six. There's a lot of, of stuff to be accomplished there in order to support any kind of growth in this area. We're hearing that growth is already um, a major concern for people that, that use the corridor and people that live in the area. So my question is, um, you know, within the scope of capital improvement, how do we get priority or is there a way to get priority for these projects?
Well, Doc, attempt to answer your question. One of, well, the purpose of the twenty eighteen transportation study was just that, to um, prioritize projects. Um, and both pedestrian type crossings as well as roadway improvements for capital improvements. And they did, they did prioritize those projects. Um, and as usual, you know, funding is limited and, and I don't know how far they did, got down on that list, but that was the purpose of the twenty eighteen transportation study. So we didn't want to go over that ground again, because that, that was what was looked at in the transportation study. Certainly, we can make reckon, you know, recommendations as well in, in the vision plan as well.
Thank you.
I would, I might uh, jump in here. So especially our new new members have some, some context. And Roger, you can confirm this, but my, my recollection is that this, uh, the idea for the uh, uh, neighborhood planning uh, came out of when the planning commission was hearing a lot about a couple of developments that were going on um, in uh, uh, in the Union area several years ago. And so we suggested that this, that if the, some of the, um, if some of the neighbors felt that the, the zoning wasn't fitting, uh, what, what they were hoping for in their neighborhood, that perhaps there should be something like this, uh, this kind of uh, opportunity for neighbors to get together and um, make recommendations about what they'd like to see, since they felt they weren't being asked those questions before. Is that, am I uh, getting history right, Roger?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, traditionally, our neighborhood plans, again, as I mentioned, and this is kind of a hybrid. It said, it's called a neighborhood plan, but it's, it's also dealing with, you know, a, a commercial area as well. But typically, the plans that have been adopted, have been like nine of neighborhood plans, they look at the range of issues from safety to tra- transportation to land use, design, that sort of thing. The direction that was given on this was to really focus on land use and, and uh, design, building design. So, and, and again, it's all within the context of the um, development dialogue process that looked, I'm, I'm kind of repeating the presentation, but I think it's an important point to make. The development dialogue process looks at the whole city. And then, and there were some zoning changes that were made as a result of that process. And I guess the process continues. But different areas are, are unique and may need a closer look. And that was the, the purpose of the direction given to take a closer look first at the Union area and uh, there may be others in the future that, that, that a one size fits all solution does not work because the, it's more, say, a more intense historic development. So again, the direction within the context of the development dialogue was to look at land use issues and um, design. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yeah, I, I was just trying to give some context for how this came about. It wasn't something that was um, um, grew out of the uh, planning department. It was initially the planning that recommended to the city council that we have uh, the op- or that there is the opportunity for this. And uh, because of, of what we had heard so much uh, about, and that was feedback about the Union area, our recommendation to the county city council was that they first um, choose this Union area uh, to, to, uh, to have this sort of process take place. That we, we said other places eventually probably would be West Colfax and maybe Alameda Corridor. Um, perhaps some other areas too, but um, this one was kind of the squeaky wheel. And so we said, this is a great place. There's a lot of people already talking and thinking about this. Let's, let's give people an opportunity. So to give some context to the new, uh, new commissioners, that was, this is a process that grew out of the first initial, I guess, out of the planning commission, went to city council. They said, uh, they liked that idea. It went back and then the uh, planning department uh, undertook this uh, this process of, of having community meetings and all that sort of thing.
Well, thank you, Dale. I think I'll take that as an intro, since you were referring to the new commissioners. I was actually at the Development Dialogue Committee meeting where um, city council asked about neighborhood plans. Um, I think the concern, and Travis, please correct me if I'm wrong, and I want to um, say a thank you to staff, is that neighborhood plans take a lot of time to do. And that eventually we'd like to look at a lot of neighborhoods in the city. Um, and that at the devout Development Dialogue Committee meeting, um, council chose the Union Corridor to start with. It, did I get any of that wrong, Travis? I don't want to. Okay. Um, so, and that's a great intro to, to my first question, which is, as I look at the corridor here, it's just um, and the plan, in my mind, I think I am already including the St. Anthony Medical Campus. And it's kind of carved out and not included as the plan area. Um, I was wondering if somebody could address it, because in my mind, it should also be included.
Um, that's a good point. I think we, we had, go ahead.
Roger, I'm sorry. Along with that, there was a citizen comment about how uh, the corridor didn't go south enough to Morrison. So I think it's, it's two sides of the same question. Kathy, you don't mind me glomming on, do you?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll only give you, I'll give you the, the rationale behind it. Um, again, the idea was to focus on the areas that were zoned, mixed use, you know, the mixed use zoning within city. And uh, were potential for development, because they're in an along the Union Corridor, and kind of the area of influence along the Union Corridor. And just to kind of speak real quickly, you know, there has been, it's not, the idea is not to promote any type of, you know, promote more, promote any type of development. The idea is development will and has occurred. You can see redevelopment has occurred on the old restaurant side, pad sites and things like that. So to address areas where potentially um, land use changes would occur. St. Anthony Medical Campus certainly is um, influenced um, and potentially could, could be in the area, but they have their own plan that is pretty well kind of developing out. And maybe to answer the question of why it wasn't brought further south, I think, you know, certainly can to, to find an area anyway, we want to, but really wanted to keep it to the more dense and more, more commercial type development and not kind of bleed into some of the residential areas. So I, I can only give you the rationale behind you thinking.
Well, I, I guess I'd like to make the comment then, as the major employer in the um, you know, even closer than the federal center to Union. Um, I think we should include it in the plan area. I think it's um, vital to think about um, the hospital and the medical campus as we plan for the Union Corridor.
So is it a matter of including the, these surrounding areas in the vicinity in the plan or just acknowledging exactly what Roger said? Here's this, they're a private organization, they got their own plans, but maybe we have an idea of what's going on over there. I wondered if you all knew what's going on with the that land that the, that they're trying to sell, you know? I mean, do we know what's coming? And does this vision fit into what is going on in the vicinity?
Can I jump in here for a second? I, I appreciate um, Commissioner Kentner's question and um, Christopher Stone's comments. And, and one of the things that occurs to me is that um, you know, as a, as a mature city and a, a, and a redevelopment um, environment, um, I, I appreciate that, you know, uh, when staff is focusing on an area, there's a need to have a concrete um, aspect to the focus area. But I also think that um, we really need to do more work, um, not maybe at the full comprehensive level of this plan so far, but to incorporate impacts uh, from surrounding areas. We have a number of big things right around this corridor. Of course, St. Anthony Medical Campus is one of them. Three hundred and ten acres of Jefferson County being developed while in our homes off of Morrison Road. Uh, we have the whole Rooney development, Rooney Valley uh, development impact. And all of those things, while not directly connected to this corridor, um, are going to have impacts in terms of number of people, uh, in terms of business opportunity um, for Lakewood. Um, you know, that's an upside in, in the sense that if we can do things in this um, plan to really capture economic benefit for the city, then uh, that's really critical. So uh, I just wanted to kind of, you know, add my comments to what's already been said is, and, and I appreciate um, Roger, your, your comment about focus is important, but I think somehow we need to incorporate a little broader perspective. Thank you.
Could I, could I add one more thing on the boundary? Um, just the rationale behind it again. Um, the idea is, looking at the next step, if there are zoning changes or are there design guidelines that was, would apply? And certainly, you know, the boundary is whatever it can be, but the, the thinking behind the boundary as it is, is those would, would be the areas where the overlay would, you know, would apply and the design guidelines would apply. So just wanted to again, give the rationale behind the thinking.
Okay, any other?
I, I don't know that, um, anybody addressed Teresa's question about south of Alameda.
Well, I think it's a, it's a, it's a broader question of, are we going to acknowledge as Alan, uh, sorry, as Commissioner Hill just talked about, are we going to acknowledge um, what we know that's going on in the, the development that's going to impact this area? Is there somehow we can add? I don't know, section, page? Something, yeah. Thank you, Kathy.
Can, can I ask you a question? Um, how far geographically were you ta- um, referring to, like?
My comment is, uh, my comment is based on one of the public comments. So you might want to take a look at, at that. And I, I apologize, I don't, let me see, who was it?
We, we have it here too.
Yeah, okay, so.
We, we can follow up on that.
So, um, this brings, I think brings up an interesting question, and that's how large should a, uh, geographically, how large should a neighborhood plan be? That's, and I'm not saying one way or another. I'm just, if, I mean, if we're going to make progress, we want to decide what's reasonable and, and what would be out of.
So I think, I'm not suggesting we change the boundary. I think it's good what you guys have done. I like it, it's walkable. You could walk from one end to the other if you had a mind. And so it makes sense from a people perspective. But the acknowledgement, as this uh, one citizen pointed out of, and, and Commissioner Hill, what's going on around it? So, thank you.
We certainly could address that prior to a to a hearing.
And Roger, if I read that uh, comment correctly that Commissioner Stone's talking about, I think that the point of that is, is about the notice. Uh, not necessarily extending the boundary to the plan, but that notice needs to go further.
Okay, and we heard that, okay.
I'd like to comment on that a little bit. Um, I think the, a, a big piece of this is the input to the study. And that, those surrounding areas make an impact. One of the primary air, one of the primary ways that it does that is in the traffic. And the twenty eighteen traffic study is pretty grossly deficient, in my opinion. Uh, it was something that I spoke to city council about at the time. The plan, there's two, two aspects of the plan that, that really need to be updated for it to be a useful input to this study. One is the growth rate for that Rooney Valley. They estimated the number of cars based on a standard growth rate of point five percent. And even in the comprehensive plan, that area is listed as a one percent growth rate. So the amount of cars coming in from that area was underestimated. And also, something that obviously wouldn't be included in the area, but I know a lot of people who live up in the mountains and they come down and they shop in that Union Corridor. And it's great for business and taxes, but that adds additional traffic. And I read one of the comments for today's meeting, and it was actually something that I was going to bring up. That right now, the traffic on Union at rush hour is horrific. I will sit through two, three rounds of each of those lights. And I'm very concerned about the hospital. What if an ambulance is trying to come at that time? And that's one of the reasons why I also agree with the other comments that having coordination and communication with St. Anthony's Hospital and having their input into this is very important. One of the things that I really appreciated. About this plan is the vision statement. And two of the, the points of that vision statement are that it's walkable and safe. And it's easy to travel through and in. And we all know that right now, there are issues with it being walkable and safe. I've listened to the previous recordings of study sessions and discussion on this topic. And that was something that came up. Folks don't feel safe riding their bike or, you know, in some of that. And so. From my perspective, I'd like to see what can we do to make it more walkable and safe? And I think that that is something that has been laid out in the connectivity plan, which I want to talk a little bit about more. But in going back to that 2018 traffic study. There were multiple scenarios looked at and the one scenario that is so critical was completely omitted. And it was high traffic and high car traffic and high walkable traffic. So the study looked at combinations and permutations, but it didn't look at the high car traffic. Combined with the high walkable traffic. And those, those were the two things that I spoke about in front of the city council. In terms of really hoping that that. Plan would be looked at, revised, those, those factors taken into consideration. And so what can we do that can help? Move traffic so that there's not so much traffic. We're looking at adding, making it more walkable, adding people. But the traffic is terrible today. How can we address that? I've heard comments from other. Meetings that, looking at outlets, that that's the only route. What are the different ways that traffic can be routed? But I think that's where the other neighborhoods come in and the input from St. Anthony's as well. And maybe a refresh or an addendum to that 2018 traffic study. I was. Very disappointed that those points that were brought up to city council were not taken into consideration. Especially knowing that this study now is being used as a critical component of this vision. Plan for the Union Corridor. I have a couple of other comments, but I'm going to stop there because I can talk and cover a lot of things and. Want to maybe give an opportunity for a response to that.
If I could, I'd like to add something. Thank you, Commissioner Peters, and welcome to the commission. Back in the, in the fall, when the planning commission was looking at this. I asked the Director of Public Works for some input, some education. On how funding is achieved. To address the problems that you, you just talked about. And he was, he was very clear and, and very candid in his answers. And basically. And I think maybe Roger has, has pointed this out as well is that. The Capital Improvement. Fund is, is a fund that has a lot of competing. Projects. It serves the entire city in a variety of ways. And that's kind of was the heart of my question is to whether or not we could, could find any, any, a way to prioritize. And I don't think there is one. The answer that I got back. From Director Hutchinson was that. And this is a quote from his email, the commissioners at the time got it. He said, given the revenue picture of the CIPP, the SIP. And the variety of purposes it addresses, there is little reason for optimism. That completing any plan's transportation component can be within sight. That's, that's a harsh reality, but that's the reality I believe we're facing. Just wanted to. Share that with you since you weren't involved in that conversation back then.
Yeah, thank you. I heard that in the recordings from the previous meetings.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner Cohen wanted to, he had a comment.
Let me unmute myself here. Oh, I am unmuted. I think just to build on Commissioner Peters. Comment, I just happen to have my 2018. Transportation study open to page twenty-three. Sure coincidence, I'm sure. But you know, it does say the growth rate, I think. In addition to development that's expected to occur within the corridor, it is anticipated development in surrounding area will grow. Such as the proposed development in Green Mountain impacting traffic conditions within the corridor. To account for this increase in potential development outside the focus area of this study. A growth rate of zero point five percent. A year was applied to existing traffic count. Through the year 2040. I think that was what you were referring to, wasn't it? So we're, the traffic growth is occurring just as we speak. Yet. You know, the present plan doesn't really address, address that squarely. And I suspect, although I think you've covered the 2018 study more exhaustively. I suspect that bears that out. And I think we got a look at the fact. And I think it was Mrs. Romero's comment. We didn't get a lot of comments, but that was a. Particularly noted that she was concerned about parking, as was other, one other comment. And, and the traffic. And, you know, we. When you would consider that a good deal of the zoning is transit. And that we recently lowered the parking requirements, at least for the residential part of transit. I think we ought to take a sober look here. I think, well, and here I'll replay my broken record from previous studies. That most of the structures that occur along Union that are there today. Probably aren't going to be replaced anytime soon. And. They really represent in, in a suburban rather than urban context or a. Transit context, which allows structures to go. Practically up to the, within five feet of the. Street line and maybe even closer. And of course, that was the whole startle effect of the beacon when it went up because it is in an urban context. And I think Mrs. Romero too made the, the point very clear that she feels that this ought to remain a suburban context. And my previous statements has always been that we not allow. The Union Boulevard itself become a canyon. Because if these structures were ever to be replaced by the type of design that we've. That, that we viewed, it will be a kind of a glass canyon maybe. But, you know. Well, I'm kind of rambling a little bit, but I. I'd like to see the suburban context remain and present zoning doesn't. Allow that. And I would like to have, although it is addressed in some ways to, in this. In this. Neighborhood Vision Plan. I would like to see a more robust word. That we keep overall suburban context and not startle people with something like the beacon. To the degree that we can avoid it. And the other thing is, is parking too. People are used to the surface parking that's there now. And possibly, you know, we may have to move away from that to some extent. But there's got to be adequate parking if the commercial part of that is to survive. Now I'll, I'll sit back and let people carve me up at this point.
Well, before that, I just wanted to add that I had heard in the recording from one of the previous meetings that the use of the RTD Transit has gone down. And that's another concern, given the traffic is already so high. And the amount of cars, it seems to be increasing. The trend is going in. The opposite direction that, that would justify putting in that type of urban infrastructure.
Okay, I'd like, maybe I can try to address, I mean, a lot of these. Your comments are valid, very good, but you know, I'm trying to address it within the context of this. You know, this plan. How we can. Address traffic, I think. The idea is to create a more pedestrian environment, get, get some people out of their cars. I know that that may not have a dramatic effect. But you are seeing some changes with. More recently, people, more people working at home. And that may continue, it may not continue. I guess we'll see. And the other, maybe the other way that this plan may impact traffic is. In the zoning changes, we are looking at building heights too, and maybe reducing some of the building heights may. Lessen some of the density. In, in a couple of zones, and that would be part of a zoning, the next step. Again, I'm trying to, trying to address your, the comments. Again, within the context of this. Scope of the vision plan that, that we have in front of us.
Well, I'll chime in here. I'd like to agree with Commissioner Cohen in the. In the sense to keep Union from becoming that canyon and having it be that open gateway. Kind of how we also envision Alameda. And I think that the specifics are a little scary because the development, the way the zoning is now does allow that building up to the street. Maybe the specifics need to be dealt within the overlay. But if we could get some good language in this, because this will be the good guiding document for that overlay and for zoning changes. That we need to have those larger setbacks and open spaces.
And I don't have the page, but maybe Chris, you can find that where the setbacks have been talked about in the plan.
Yeah, and I thought I read that the current setbacks are zero. There's, there's currently, there, there's no setback currently. Probably look that up. It was where. A comparison that it's zero currently. So clearly that allows for. A lot more development like the beacon style. And that takes away the opportunity to make bike lanes and pedestrian lanes or widen it. That's the problem is that we have these two conflicting things and. The traffic study was so disappointing because that was the key thing. Trying to add walkability and bring more walking in, but we already have extensive traffic and it did not study a scenario with those two combined. And it didn't make recommendations and I, and I believe that based on that scenario. The most likely. Way to even adapt a higher pedestrian traffic to the traffic we have today without adding anymore. Would be a overhead or underground bridge, obviously very, very costly and probably not practical. Based on the discussions that, that we, we had in earlier meetings from Commissioner Hill.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt. Who was that?
Do you want to go?
Sure, I'll just note that. In the vision plan on page thirty-one under section five, recommendation C three. Is to look at building setbacks adjacent to the Union Boulevard. So. I agree with that comment. I think it's something that's important to look at. I know Roger also talked about. Looking at a recommendation on building height. I think that's captured in recommendation C four. And I guess maybe to go back to what Roger was touching on. If, if these are really good comments and things for a broader discussion. I want to be reminded like what's within the scope of this vision plan and what we can really do to provide good feedback to you. Ahead of a public hearing for this particular plan. And whatever else we can build from that in the future. I, I don't want to lose track of, but I want to keep focused on what's within our scope here.
Thank you, Alex. Sorry, Commissioner Bartlett, that was exactly the type of thing. That was the section I was referring to that I was hoping we could make that stronger. Because right now it just says to read, the setback should be reviewed. And it doesn't really give that specific, you know, to be reviewed. To give that open space.
So you're looking for a particular number or a recommended, recommendation for a distance or what? In particular, should we discuss about the recommendation?
Oh, I was just gonna add that the, this vision plan, again, these recommendations are just the first step. So we're going to dive into the, the exact setback updates or changes in the zoning overlay.
Right, that's part of the, exactly. That's part of the overlay plan. But if we could have some language that, you know, it just says it should be revised and reviewed. Well, we don't want them to be narrower. And less, so you know, it doesn't say which direction we want to go.
And we are going, so as part of the zoning overlay and design guideline process, we are going to have more community meetings. And at that point, we will. Discuss what that looks like.
Maybe I'll jump in real quick. Sorry, jump in real quick. I think there is an opportunity to. Maybe adjust the language a little bit. Should be reviewed as necessary, you know, to, to allow for more. Pedestrian space or something like that, but there is. Again, this is a study session and there is an opportunity with feedback from the commission. That we can. This is not, this isn't set in stone quite yet, you know. I mean, so there's an opportunity to revise or, or refine language.
Thank you, Roger. That was exactly what I was, the type of thing I was talking about. Thank you.
Before you go on, Roger, and we'll come back to Commissioner Hill in just a moment, but I want to make sure that we. Address Commissioner Bartlett's question. He had asked what, I think. What kind of feedback you were looking for? And I think both you and Christie just addressed part of, some of the comments that were, were questions that were, were taught or. Questions we have and, and suggestions are. Part of step two, I think in your presentation, which is the zoning overlay. And so we want to get this, make the best recommendations here so that we can go forward and have a public hearing. And then get to step two where these kinds of things would actually become recommendations about setbacks. Whether it would be a canyon, I don't want that either. And, and also. Well, everything that we're talking about that actually relates to zoning and not to, to the vision, is that is right? Roger or Chris?
Yeah, you are correct. And I think, I mean, again, this document gives direction. For the next step and the next step involves a public process and et cetera. But if there, as I mentioned, if there is. Language changes that would give. More sharper direction or better, more clear direction for the next step. It certainly isn't too late in the process to. To revise or, you know, rework the language a little bit, sure.
Okay, good. So I know Commissioner Hill wanted to say something, but I think that's what we should be probably thinking about is what sort of recommendations will we like to see in revisions to the language? So Commissioner Hill, please.
Yeah, I'm kind of going to dovetail right on that, Dale. One of the things that occurs to me, and I recognize that, you know, the overlay process is where refinement takes place. In the details. My preference would be to do as much refinement. In the vision plan itself. As we can on things that we know need to be refined. For example, setbacks. Building height is a concern for a couple of different reasons. One for the canyon effect. I also have the concern about St. Anthony helicopter. When that hospital opened, the people on Green Mountain where I live, we had a lot of discussions with management of the hospital about. Flight for life and the, the flight paths from the hospital and what was represented to us. Was that copters heading north and west. Could fly out the Union Corridor and go up six or keep going north or go south. They could go. Out Alameda if they're headed to the other in the opposite direction. So in essence, they recognized the sensitivity to. Helicopter traffic for the neighborhoods that are on Green Mountain and. With the discussion now about building heights, I'd like for us to incorporate, maybe do a little more study, but incorporate. Some serious building height recommendations in the vision itself. I realize a vision is, is by its nature, it's broad. But I think if there are areas that we can, can really hone in on in the vision plan, then that's less.
But I think if there are areas that we can, um, can really hone in on in the vision plan, then that's less complexity, uh, that needs to be worked out in, um, in the overlay stage, uh, and I think if we find ourselves in the overlay stage and we're having to really essentially rewrite a, a number of aspects of the vision plan, then I think we went a little too fast with the vision plan. Um, I have a big concern about the building height thing and, um, because the bottom line is if we put in tall buildings on Union that are going to interfere with, uh, copter traffic flying from three quarters of a mile away, uh, those copters are going to be flying over Green Mountain, they're going to be flying over the next lowest thing. And so I think we need to, um, whatever parameters that we could build in the vision, uh, would be helpful as far as moving forward to the next step.
Could I have one more, one quick thing, I'm, I'm sorry, Chaney, do you want it? Um, but I think that, go ahead.
I just recalled in, in one of the public meetings, we did do a very, uh, kind of rough analysis, basically the, the, the whole study area kind of, um, this, the site slopes from west to east. And, um, it allows, so there was a lot of talk about protecting views, and so we did do some rough look at the grade changes and how, you know, you could have a little bit taller buildings further east that wouldn't impact the views to the residents to the west, so we, we have some of that information. Um, it would be pretty easy to add in to the plan.
I'd like to see it.
Okay, and one thing I just wanted to add, and yeah, Chaney mentioned, there has been analysis, but I would caution we weren't gonna want to go too far because I think, I mean, you said the direction for sure and, and set the intent, but building height, I think a considerable amount of anal- additional analysis is necessary before, you know, we start talking about sixty feet or fifty feet or something like that, but certainly um, we can, we can include that initial analysis and provide a, a little more direction in, in the language, but again, I think it does need quite a bit of analysis to, to really, looking at slopes, looking at views, looking at like, things like St. Anthony's and other impacted, um, areas before you land on a, you know, solid recommendation. So, you know, I think there's a, there's a medium ground in there somewhere, I think, in the plan.
Very good, thank you, I, I have a couple of comments and maybe a question in this, so, um, one, I, I'll, I'll tell you that my, I'm a lifelong resident of Lakewood, my, my parents moved here in nineteen fifty-six, so I turned sixteen in nineteen seventy when Lakewood became a city. I bought a car and my mother said, oh great, one more car, there's already so much traffic. I don't know if you know, it was like in nineteen seventy, but it was, it was nothing like now. I'm not making light of this, I think that the, uh, traffic is, every single time something comes up, traffic is one of those things that, uh, that gets discussed and it needs to be. If my mom were driving around right now, uh, which, obviously she's not, but, uh, um, I don't know what she would say. So, I, I, as I say, I'm not making light of it, I'm just saying that's, that is, uh, if there's one comment that seems to be made in my years on the commission, but also even dating back to when I was a boy in Lakewood, uh, that's, traffic is, is one of those things, and we like the idea that we don't have a lot of traffic out here, the reality is we we're the fifth biggest city in Colorado now and we're going to have traffic because the reasons that we all moved here are why other people are wanting to move and live here too. That's, that's, and so we have to figure out the best ways for this, and so on that topic, it's interesting because it's sort of a double edged sword, some of the requests that the citizens were, um, were making or I guess their vision about the area being, having a lot of, uh, restaurants and and it's, in essence, being a destination for more than just people who live there, it would obviously increase traffic too, but it, the, the double edged sword is that if you don't have that outside, uh, um, input in terms of business, the customers, then those those restaurants and other small businesses can't, they can't function, so yeah. In order for those to be there for the local residents, they also have to be an attraction to people who are outside. I think that's, that's another one of those difficult aspects of making a place that much greater to be living in, but it also makes it a place that much greater for other people to come into as well. These are, these are things that we, you know, that we have to try to balance, listen to all side, um. So, um, I, I do agree with Commissioner Cohn too, and I, I have made a lot of comments about bicycling in that area. I was, used to ride my motorcycle there before any of this was built, and I, I think that having buildings up close would be, uh, would be uh, not a good thing, I think that there would not be room for bicycle paths and for uh, pedestrian sidewalks and, and all those other things that, uh, that we need to have until maybe building it sort of on what's already there. So that I, I then have a, a comment about our process, maybe, uh, because this, of what this is, it's a, uh, it was initiated by, uh, or suggested by us, and then, I was actually well before the, the development dialogue began, that, that we actually made this recommendation to City Council. Wait, I don't even remember when, about this kind of idea, um, and, and so it's sort of, it's a grassroots plan as it is our vision right now, um, and so I don't, I don't think it's, uh, appropriate for us to just change what the citizens said they'd like to see. Uh, but maybe what in our, in the proposal that goes, eventually goes forward, and for, to the public hearing, maybe what, there should be a section for, um, uh, planning commission suggestions or recommendations or observations or something like that, that would be published in advance and and the same citizens could have an opportunity to, to comment on those things. Does that sound like a reasonable process to, um, Roger and Christie, but in terms of what what you could do or how these things would normally go, maybe Chaney would chime in on that too.
We, well, I'm just trying to think process wise. We certainly could do that, we certainly could include that, I'm trying to think of how to capture all of the the comments, you know, appropriately. Cause I've heard.
I think it'd be able to articulate them to you, I think we'd have to give you some feedback. Or maybe thought, thinking about it, maybe over email in the next week or something, or whatever period of time we decide.
Can I clarify what you're asking for, Dale? I mean, sorry, are, um, are you asking for a separate section that just has the comments from this meeting? Or are you asking for these comments to be incorporated into the plan?
Good question, and first let me say, uh, we don't have a precedent for this, so we're in, in a way setting the precedent and I, I'm more bringing it up for us to discuss, what's the uh, what's the best way, I can see that we need to have a way, that there's a lot of commissioner comments that that should be incorporated in this, but at the same time, we want to remember it's a neighborhood plan and we don't want the, the neighbors to say, look, yeah, went to the city and the planning commission just did whatever they wanted with it, or or, or, you know, we wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't want that sort of situation, we want them to feel like it's their plan and that maybe our experience, um, in these matters and, and our vision for the city as a whole and understanding about these problems and, uh, and that sort of thing. Perhaps we would make some suggestions that they hadn't thought of, or, um, that would, uh, well, we'll just leave it there, that they hadn't thought of, and so partly, um, thank you Theresa, is, what I'm bringing up is how should we best do it, my thought initially was, uh, that, that, that what Christie and Roger have put together is a, a presentation that's based on the community meetings and input that you've, that you, um, that you've had or have received, and now we're doing this, having a study session and we're giving you feedback as well, and I think that, uh, what I was, would imagine that it would be is, is, uh, uh, comments, because that's what we are really doing is commenting on the neighborhood, uh, on, on the, the, um, I'm sorry, on the, the recommendations and, and suggestions from the, um, neighborhood meetings.
Commissioner Miller, just to also note that this is, uh, based on the comments, I don't know if you had a chance to read the Lakewood Speaks comments, but they were all very consistent and I know that a lot of those people came to the meetings and they felt that those comments didn't get incorporated as well, so this definitely does come from uh, public input. I, I wanted to follow up on the connectivity framework and it ties in with the, uh, with the traffic flow and the same discussion, I know we're, we're talking about process, but I, I wanted to make sure that we wrap this up on the, on the transmission uh, interconnectivity side, and I have a couple of recommendations if we could uh, maybe redo some things just to clarify them on this graphic. Uh, one of the things that this connectivity plan, it shows existing and proposed intersections, primary, secondary, uh, and there's, the, the concern that I have is I want to know what's existing and I want to know what's proposed. And of what's proposed, I want to know what we have right of way for and what is private right of way, because obviously this connectivity plan, as had been noted, this, this is helpful for cars, it's helpful to look at the coexistence of pedestrians and bicycles. However, if there's a significant amount of private property that is involved as key points in this connectivity plan, we need to know that that may not be feasible and we may not get there. I'm, I'm very concerned about that, I heard in one of the previous meetings, there was discussion that one of the key connectivity corridors was at a, where a landscaping business exists currently. And that would mean that that business would have to be disrupted potentially, I'm, I hope that maybe folks have discussed that or that owner of that business has, has been contacted or it's, you know, there've been some discussions if that's a really key corridor. Uh, there may be other businesses and other owners that are impacted. But I also heard there were some areas where we had right of way, it was city right of way and there wouldn't be as much of an issue, so I don't know, um, whoever put this map together, um, staff or consultants, it would certainly be appreciated to have an update and see what's existing, what is proposed and for what is proposed, uh, what is necessary to attain that right of way to, to actually make that possible. I have a couple other technical comments, so I'm, I know I have a lot of technical, I'm gonna throw a lot of technical things out, so I'm gonna just stop at that one before I go on to the next one, but I just wanted to complete the whole roads and traffic and connectivity piece, uh, and, and, and see if it was possible to have that graphic updated.
Do, do you think that maybe breaking it into two maps? Might, and, and, and then also with the annotations you're talking about, but have one map with the existing system, one that would include proposed, and then maybe note where there's right of way, that.
I think that would be a good idea, because this map is great, it shows the bigger picture, right, it gives you the overall picture of what you're looking for. So it's very useful, however, we, to understand the feasibility and it, and really if this is even possible, this might be completely a pipe dream, we don't know. Just to give a little bit of background and understanding of that feasibility, having a separate map that maybe shows, yeah, what the areas that are proposed and if we have the right of way, so I agree with you wholeheartedly, uh, you've had some very good suggestions, yes.
And I don't know, Christie, maybe you can address the difficulty of doing that.
Yeah, we can do that, um, this map, just a little bit of background. It was originally included in the urban, uh, urban, um, Boulevard, um, corridor, urban design plan. Um, and so it has been amended, so this, um, it has, it has been amended to incorporate the recommendations in the Union Area Transportation Study, so we were the original authors of this map. We can, um, we can recreate it so that it's easier to understand, for sure.
Okay. I think Commissioner Cohn wanted to maybe address some.
I've got a real specific question to ask, just to, um, uh, kind of piggyback on, uh, Commissioner Peterson's, uh, inquiry. I would like to know specifically where Taft Street is and where Cedar Lane is. Because I can't pick them out from this or another map, and I may just not be seeing it, but they must be in there somewhere, uh, and I think they're one of the connecting, uh, streets there that I just don't know where they are.
Okay.
Are you referring to the, uh, connective, connectivity framework map?
I think so, yeah. Cedar Drive is, but, uh.
Cedar Drive?
What's that?
Did you say Cedar Drive?
No, I know where that is. It's Cedar Lane that I want to know about.
Cedar Lane?
Let me see where that comes up in the report.
So, we are talking about map thirteen, right? Page thirty-seven of the vision plan?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, but the, the, those names don't appear on that map. Uh, they are referred to earlier in the, um, that should have been a little more explicit as to where that appears.
So it may be at this scale that it's not possible to ma- pick up every road, I don't know, so I mean, two maps would definitely help with proposed and existing, but I'm wondering if the scale two could be worked with, I know that could create some difficulties in having more than one map for existing and proposed, but it could just be, uh, an issue with the scale, not being able to pick up every roadway on one page.
Um, and the reason I wanted to know that is because there is a reference to those two streets elsewhere in the report.
Okay.
And I can't find it momentarily.
Okay, so you had Cedar Lane and what was the other street, Taft?
Uh, Taft, Taft.
Okay.
Well, it's Taft Street and Cedar Lane.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
I actually had it, the, the reference to it is on page nine.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Construction, dedication, or public easement, those implementation related plan to a portion of Taft Street by Fairfield Inn and Suites. With future development, Taft Street will be required to connect with Cedar Lane. And I'm thinking, you know, I have an idea, or generally this might be, but, but I can't relate it to the connectivity.
Okay, well, well, go ahead.
Do, um, identify where Siri Lane is on the, the connectivity map? Um, it's like right in the middle, it's really close to St. Anthony, the medical campus, um, there is a label there, but we can definitely add Taft Street to this map, the label for.
And, and she, he was saying Cedar Lane, Cedar Lane, so what, what?
Siri Lane, I think.
Siri, Siri Lane, spelled differently. It's S E R E. Is that, is that may, ma- might that be, oh, here's, I see there's a Siri Lane.
And then there's a Cedar Lane.
Are those the same street, is that simply a misspelling maybe?
I will have, I'll, I'll look.
Okay, we'll, we'll follow up on that one.
It's on page nine, is where that appears.
We can follow up on that.
Okay.
Good suggestion, that's something we can move forward on.
Yeah, that was just for my clarification, so I, I know where that is.
Thank you.
Can I, can I address the planning commission comments, it can be made in two ways, I think, I mean, it's totally planning commission's decision. One is to suggest direct edits to the text, because this is part of a public process, or a separate page with planning commissioner comments, so those are, I'm just suggesting two ways, alternate ways of bringing comments forward.
Well, that, that's good, so how, what is the, uh, what, what do the commissioners feel about making edits to the text personally?
I think that's our job is to make the edits and clarifications.
I agree with Commissioner Tendner.
I think, um, my preference, I've stated it before, um, but I don't know how much work it creates for staff, but if we could have a collaborative, um, environment for document like SharePoint or Google Drive or whatever that is, to where we could put comments, edits in one document where all of our comments appear in one master document for staff, that might be the cleanest way to do it.
You know, Commissioner Bartlett, I appreciate that, but I'm also concerned about open meetings and that this be an open process. You know, Commissioner Bartlett, I appreciate that, but I'm also concerned about open meetings and that this be an open process. And that when we do that, it might be like we're meeting and um um via electronically and behind the eyes of the public.
Understood, yeah. I I think like um my difficulty with this type of form giving feedback to uh. Planning staff is that often we voice our comments, um no follow of their own, but it's hard to. Go page by page as a group and actually provide feedback, so I'm open to other suggestions. Um totally understand where you're coming from, but um yeah. I don't know, it's hard to just voice comments on a plan like this and see them incorporated and then review it again.
I I want I'll jump in for a second just to I think offer some clarifications. I uh agree with Commissioner Kenner that we. Should be making clarifications and that sort of thing, and I think Commissioner Peter's suggestion about. Splitting this map and uh is one of those kind of clarifications and other things. Uh I think that where we want to um uh this is my recommendation, where we where we stop short is uh. Uh if we want to uh make suggestions about zoning changes and that sort of thing, that should be part of what uh I think a a separate. List that or or page or or recommendations from the planning commission to this document and to the people. Of the neighborhood that are the ones participating in uh in in this. And so then all of that would uh would be published and go forward to the um. To the public hearing. So I think any clarifications like these ones that we're talking about.
Well, I agree. I can agree to that to a certain extent. However, there are references in here to specific zone zoning things. And I actually have a couple of comments. I don't know, maybe we need to make motions and see if we have majority agreement. Um I I, you know, this is a study session. I don't think we can vote tonight. Um I'm happy to let everybody know what I'm thinking. And I do believe that these are clarifications of what's in here. Um I understand that the overlay will be the specific zoning things. Um but for example, there is a list of suggestions of prohibited uses. And I think that one was simply left off when we're thinking about walkable communities. And I hope we all would could all agree that um storage facilities should probably be added to that list of prohibited unions uh uses. Uh along this area.
I thought that was on the list at one time.
So maybe again, so that what maybe it wasn't accidentally taken off. So in that sense, I'm not a hundred percent behind what you said there, Commissioner Miller. Because that would be one of the changes that I would like to see and not as a comment. But if we all agree to have it in the document, I think that would be a cleaner way to go about it. As we present it to um council.
Um no, we're not presenting it to council yet. Well, the process would be.
Well, when we get. When we get to that point, but we're having a study session with our comments so that we can get to that point.
So I the process would be, and I I'm glad for your comments because we um uh. Bring up what the process should be. So the we're we're going to uh. We we can't make any group decisions tonight. We can't have any motions, but what we can do and what a study session is really useful for is. Co- putting our heads together about what kinds of motions we might put forward added at the actual uh hearing. We are would not be, you know, um uh making any guarantees or speculations about how anyone would vote on them. And so everyone has the opportunity to say, I'd like to put this forward, you know, and uh and then I may make this motion at the. At the meeting or I might change my mind by that time, you know, whatever, because we're not, again, the. We can't be committed or get any sort of commitment to these these kinds of things, but but we can. Uh make this uh list of and it could be a list even of uh potential motions that. Uh one of us might make. Uh and then one at a time make them and then we'd have a chance to um to. Uh in the public meeting to to discuss them and we could vote on them and and then if we want to, we would then incorporate them into the. Into the plan. I think that where we have to draw the line is if we're changing the um what uh. The the public has said they want, then we need to do that in the public meeting. Um if they really did leave off, uh for instance, storage facilities, then that would be one of the motions that we would make in the.
Okay. We could probably go about it that way. However, this is still a draft and I believe the study session is to get to a better final draft. So that hopefully we don't have to bake so many motions. We could do consensus. Consensus is often taken. It sounds like we might have consensus to add storage facilities as one of the prohibited uses.
I I can. May I add one? Um, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um what I'm hearing in in terms of, you know, this is a public meeting, public. Um the issues seem to, just to summarize where I'm hearing the comments are. Like on C three to sharpen the language under um setbacks. Under C four, to give a little more direction or a little more direction to. The next step of the process. Then I'm hearing um some, you know, the the comments on the transportation map and and that sort of thing, which I think. Understanding. So those seem to be the issues. And then also you brought up, Kathy, you brought up. The land use storage facility. So I think. Rather than throw it wide open to everything, but I mean, I think that's those seem to be the areas where. Discussion, we're getting some direction from planning commission.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. That's exactly the purpose of it, and I and I really appreciate the responsiveness of of staff, especially Roger and in. Um looking at how those can be adapted into it. I I have a couple more. That I want to bring up. I want to kind of keep us, you know, on track with things. One of the comments that I had heard, and of course, all of this discussion is based on public comment. So there's no surprise there to the public. Uh one of them related to looking at the waste or the stormwater drainage. From this and I had a paper with a note on it, but it. Basically, there is discussion that the uh there's a. Backlog of drainage management of hundred million dollars. And there's concerns about how the drainage would look. And that uh couldn't necessarily go through the federal center because of the toxicity there. And I was interested to maybe get staff's thought on that. I didn't. I I don't know, maybe it was covered in in a part of the meeting that I I maybe there was like forty minutes I didn't listen to. But I'm I'm interested i- if there has been any engineering input or thought. Into the drainage because I drive this union corridor frequently, uh very, very frequently. That's how I know that I'm sitting at stoplights, every stoplight, two to three times through cycles of the light. And I also know that that area gets flooded. When we have heavy rains, that union area, I know, I don't care if it takes me an extra twenty, thirty minutes. I avoid it because it is flooded and it is dangerous to drive my car there. So has that been looked at or discussed from an engineering assessment uh in terms of this plan?
Um not in detail. Do you have a specific recommendation that you're looking at or are you just speaking to the topic?
Mostly they. It it's mostly that there's a problem today. And you know, a- as we are looking at this neighborhood plan, it's a holistic plan. And and just like traffic is a very serious problem today, the drainage is also a problem. And I am not certain that's, you know, the city council maybe handles that, but has the drainage in that area? Has it been looked at? Has it been addressed? Has i- is it even on the city's radar? That there's a problem when there's heavy rains, that there can be three feet of water on that road and it can be dangerous. For cars and just just is it on the radar and and if it is? Then then I'd be interested to know what what the to have more background and detail. I mean, I've seen it. But if somebody has done an engineering assessment on it, maybe they know for sure it's not going to rise up to five feet. They know that there's enough drainage and that two, three feet might inconvenience cars, but there's not going to be anything serious. Or maybe it's not even on the radar. Maybe however, these things get into the plan for improvements, it hasn't yet made it. And so it hasn't even been looked at. It's just that I think that's really where my question is from that.
I I think we would need to do follow up on that um to answer your question. We certainly can, but I just don't. Um personally, I don't have an answer for you. It's it that's an engineering discussion, but we certainly could follow up. On that issue.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Does engineering do all the stormwater design? And studies?
Um. Public works. That the the stormwater utility and there's engineering manages it. So, yeah, I mean, overall, but they use a lot of consultants for the details for sure. But it's just not, I I would personally would have to follow up on on it on that question to find out. The magnitude of the issue and if there's anything being done to address.
We might want to, we might want to have somebody from engineering come to the to the hearing and.
We certainly could.
Questions directly. I think those are the uh. That that's a good suggestion, Commissioner Peters, uh that we could ask engineering directly. They could be apprised in advance that. That the questions are coming, so they'll have the answers and not be saying, oh, yeah, I'll look into that. Um but then if if we um are not not satisfied with the answers, then that's something that we can make a uh. Put together a motion or someone could uh to uh to amend this plan.
Sure, maybe we get the answer in the midterm. Roger can email all of us whatever information is available from the city and we can. Follow up. I mean, maybe it's something that's been looked at and it's perhaps not an issue and so we don't even need to bring it up at the meeting. Or if it is, then we can decide appropriately once we hear back and understand, you know, the scope of it.
Sure.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we can get back certainly to to address the question. Well in advance of the hearing in it, but if there are additional questions, we could bring. Um the appropriate person from engineering, but that's something we can. Understanding your question, I think we can do some follow up at a higher level in terms of the magnitude of the issue. And if there are any plans, so it's on. We certainly can do that. I would do that.
Great. Should I keep going with questions or should I take a break and let somebody else input some questions?
I'd like to make an observation if I could about process. Um, you know, it sounds like we may have some significant um recommendations um. To to make with regard to handling various aspects of this, and it just seems to me like um. A a lot cleaner process would be to first generate a red line. That it um would incorporate a lot of the, you know, context of tonight, that could, you know, concerns, things we can handle. Uh rather than try to edit um a proposal from the dais in a public. You know, in in a of a public hearing. I just think um the better prepared we are, having done the research. And evaluated the language to see if we're getting to the point where we're needing to get to. I I think that's um that's a better process. Roger, is that something that could happen in advance of a public meeting? I'm trying to think of process. Well, I think it can. I I and as I mentioned before, as long as we're talking about. Um topics and red lines that have been addressed, you know, tonight at the meeting and not open it up to everything because then.
Right.
Um you're not having, it's not a public process. I'm trying to, I don't know the best. I'm trying to think of the best way to. To get that, to get to that.
Roger, also, I just wanted to add, I think that is also important to remember that the focus of this plan is really about the vision. Um the function and land use and design. It's not. It's called a neighborhood, uh the Union Neighborhood Vision Plan, but it's not a traditional neighborhood plan. Um so it is really focused on land use and design recommendations.
Kristy, I have a question about that. In looking back at the comprehensive plan and the way it referenced um prior work. Um in previous comprehensive plan, this was essentially um described as a corridor. Not a neighborhood plan. Um I don't know, Roger, Kristy, if at this juncture, we might want to reconsider. How we're describing this uh and treat it more as a corridor plan here? We went through a a number of discussions with even with city council as far as what a neighborhood plan and it it really isn't a. Traditional type of neighborhood plan that we've done. It's it it looks more like a corridor plan. And it feels a lot more like a corridor plan. Um. I'm not gonna go, I don't know, the history of the naming it is a little, a little bit awkward sometime, but. I don't know that we want to revisit that. It's up to you, you know, of course, if you want to revisit that, but. I'm I'm more concerned personally about the content of it and what it addresses, but it. It it does function more as an area plan. I would call it an area plan. Okay, I don't know that it's um significant at this juncture. I mean, it's been um, you know, a a work in process for. A long time now uh under this label, so maybe that's, maybe that's not something in terms of a label, but we can um perhaps. You know, in our deliberations, acknowledge that this is a corridor, so. Um but as far as capturing comments, I I don't know Travis, if you have any thoughts on that, on the best way to. To look at the documents.
I mean, I mean, I think you've laid it out well, Roger. We we should. Yeah, uh resolve at the end of this meeting what we've heard and what we're going to bring back to to the planning commission. So you you've got a list so far, it sounds like, and if more things come up, we'll add them to the list and then we can bring those items back for the hearing.
And and perhaps we can bring, you know, we can. Think you have a pretty good understanding of the comments so far and and there may be some more, but to propose some edits. To the document that we can bring forward at the hearing, and if those edits aren't reflective of. What planning commission wants, it certainly can change it, but we can take a, take our best. Stab at it based on what we're hearing, because I think we're kind of understanding what you're what you're looking for. If that makes sense.
That makes sense to me.
I think that's the the best process. That way it's clear that what what recommendations were making. And how they're distinct from what what was there initially. Um and the process is that we're. We're conducting a hearing to get feedback and then provide perhaps even more recommendations after we hear public comment. Um and deliberations with point of a study session is so that we get our own thoughts. Um out and and prepared for the meeting, but then uh. We'll publicize those and the public will have a ch- a chance to look at to what we're suggesting and and also at the plan for any of those who. Who haven't looked at it yet and want to come to that meeting.
Yeah, as Commissioner Hald, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hald said, we we certainly could um do a red line or make it very clear what's being proposed and what's. Existing to everyone. I think a a red line would be clear because um, you know, it's it's helpful visually. To see what the languages you're starting from and then to see what the exact change is. Um just doing edits is not very easy to follow. Uh huh, so we can certainly can do that and try to capture what we've heard. I and I. I think, I mean, I I don't know, we can guarantee anything, but I think we can get close and and. And the. Well, this, you know, I I recognize that and um, you know, you're you're um assimilating a lot of input tonight. And I think, you know, translating that into um into a red line, into next steps um to move toward a hearing um. I recognize it's a process. That's why I think there should be some back and forth. I understand um Commissioner Kentner's concerned about open meetings. And I don't know that we if we need to get um legal input on that, but it it seems. As if it would be uh an accepted process for the body that will ultimately be deliberating on something. To try to to work together, you know, through staff to create a product so that when we go to public hearing, it's coherent.
All right, can I start back with some questions?
Yeah, Rhonda, go for it.
These should be easy questions for staff on the presentation. The first one is in the, as we went through the process of how we came to where we are now from the development dialogue. It was noted that there's three potential area specific plans, the union, neighborhood or corridor, whichever is the first one. Is number two and three, the Alameda Corridor and the Colfax Corridor? And does it are, is there plans to a timeline or plan to undertake those? And is there plans to a timeline or plan to undertake those ones next?
Those are the kind of the suggested areas. There is no, it's my understanding, there's no. Timeline. We have to get through this one first. But then it would be a matter of discussion with. Planning commission and council to determine what the priorities are and we'll. Follow those priorities, but it's not unless Travis, you know that there's a next one in line. I think. That's up to up to some discussion. And direction.
Okay, I saw Travis smile on that one.
I've been smiling on being able to finish this one.
Okay, okay. Okay, but there is a plan to undertake these other these other two. Potentially, are those the two that are on the radar or they haven't been identified?
Those are the two have been discussed. I mean, if you go back to the premise of all this, it's really. Taking a closer look at areas. That potentially could experience development. Are higher. Have zoning for higher density. And may need a closer look. And I think if you start thinking there's a Colfax corridor. Different segments of the Colfax corridor. There's Alameda, certain segments of Alameda. There may be some other areas that. Pop up too, but those are two that seem to jump. Jump to the top of the list.
Yeah, that I just wanted to get a kind of a feel of what's to come and part of the reason for that question goes back to. A point that or question that Commissioner Hill had regarding infrastructure and. Competing for city resources. Obviously, Colfax corridor is an area that needs a lot of attention. And just wondering if I saw all three of these plans together. What does that look like and how would they be competing against each other for the infrastructure that's needed and? If I was sitting on city council, I would want to understand. If I make a decision to put money into one versus the other. It if I just because I start with one, if I put money into this one, then it may preclude. My ability to put money into the other ones and thinking about that. And and just also to understand the work that might be coming down the line for the planning commission as well. If these other two, I did, I am aware that there's not just staff hours, but also consultant hours that have gone into this. Is there? A estimate or is there a cost or maybe that's not something we discuss publicly? How much approximately do each of these efforts? Cost? Do we know that?
Well, I'll. Try to address typically we've done. We've had adequate staff numbers to do a lot of the work in house. But when we need things like. Chaney's work on design and that certainly would be needed. Should we go to the next step of design? Guidelines, we need that expertise that we don't have adequately in our staff. I can't throw a number at it. Primarily is the staff led process where we use consulting. To kind of complement what our work. But I can't. You know, in the past, we've got adequate to answer your question, the past, we've had adequate staff. To do a lot of the work in house. Whether that we still will have that, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, right. With the cutbacks and everything that's going on, I hear you on that. Okay. Next question, it was noted that one of the uses, I think it was in. I can't remember if it was in the first quarter or what was indoor entertainment, and I was just curious. What give me an example, some examples of indoor entertainment.
I don't Travis, maybe you can help me with that one.
Dave and Buster's was talked about at the, I remember that coming up at the community meeting. That would be an example.
Theaters, things like that.
Just wanted to. Get a sense of what that is, what exactly is, is there a? Definition of that, or I mean, I wouldn't want a strip club necessarily, just saying.
I think the zoning allows it, but I think I think I don't know if there's a definition of indoor entertainment. I think we use that for the plan, but I did. I think it's pretty well delineated in the zoning ordinance what's allowed though. A music venue, for example.
Great.
As if it's a music venue, it's probably a bar too, but I don't know. Might fall under bar. Travis, maybe you can shed some light.
Yeah, it's a it's a commercial establishment offering recreational entertainment activities, including but not limiting. Limited to bowling alleys, nightclubs, theaters, video games. Coin operated amusement, other games of skill or scoring within an enclosed structure. May also include customer accessory uses such as the sale of food and beverage.
Okay, thank you. And another question was, and there is one of the slides where it talked about looking at the different levels of the. Design and it was respond and or no, it was the contextual. The expressive and sustainable. Those were some of the goals or objectives. And I was curious about the specifics on sustainable. I know that. The what was mentioned was reusing buildings. I guess that's a repurposing. And maybe a little bit more background on that. And then water quality was mentioned. I was curious what what was meant by that? And then maybe give some other examples that might be looked at under the sustainability. Category.
I don't know, Chaney, if you wanted to.
Principal for sustainable, the the recommendations S one through S five are on page thirty three. And so they go a little bit more into detail, but. In terms of the reuse of buildings, when we showed in some of the. Image preferring, we did show buildings that have been. Had new facades, they were reused and upgraded, and that was one of the more popular choices. So that did. Stand out as a as a community choice. And then in terms of the stormwater, I think. Commissioner Peters, with your comments about the stormwater issues and the flooding that did come up in the community. Conversations, and so we were trying to address that new development should. Be responsible and providing some stormwater. Perhaps more than than is currently required by the zoning code to. Create more sustainable sites, so dealing with that stormwater better onsite. So that it doesn't flood Union.
Great, and I think I read that the current standards today. For retention ponds are greater than what they were when it was built in the seventies or initially, I think I saw that. And is that that's the type of thing that you're referring to in that category?
Right, and and for, you know, under those, let's see, what is it? Environmentally friendly features and materials. I think perhaps that could be one that we expand upon unless it's in another recommendation. But. Dealing with the stormwater onsite in a in a. More aesthetic way. So sometimes you'll see big developments that just put in a retention pond like the Walmarts or something that you drive by and it's. You know, not necessarily usable space and it doesn't look the greatest so that so the idea was that. You know, that incorporate that into the design. We talk about walking paths and usable open space that that. Perhaps incorporating that stormwater design into more usable space in new development is more appropriate than just say. A pond.
Gotcha. So and is this is page thirty three, is that? Can can that be? Developed upon and and some of those details included or is is it intentionally very broad? I just, I guess I'm wondering like some of the other areas, I guess. It it's, it would be nice to have more detail and direction. As we move forward, since this is the vision plan and then the specifics are developed from it, kind of understanding. Like in some of the other areas, what are what are those those directions that we're looking at going in?
If I can piggyback on that comment, I had a similar comment. It's a surprise. Well, I I am wondering along those lines in order to accomplish that, if you could tie this. Back to the sustainability plan. And then. You know, how does this help meet that? And that might give you the details of that Commissioner Peters is looking for. The other thing I wondered in that page is, do you want to add something about? Preserving trees and green space. And maybe even replacing if green. Space and trees are lost. If you want to actually add that into this vision.
Okay. We certainly could.
You know, I would just want to chime in here because I have green space written down to to address.
And I think you're the comment on the sustainability plan, yeah, a lot more detail has been developed, obviously. In the sustainability plan, so we could like we could link. Link that to it as well. And we did hear a lot of comments about green space. In the meetings as well. I mean, I think we've captured them, but we personally, I did hear a lot. About. Preserving and promoting green space, especially in some of the undeveloped lands like on the.
And I would say considering. Replacing because when a municipality has to build. There, I mean, I know that we've been required to replace trees that we've had to tear down, so. Somewhere in the vicinity, so I just, yeah, like, keep the balance of green space that's there maybe.
And and certainly under the sustainability category, I have an interest in sustainable buildings and green rooftops, things like that. I don't know if that's. What is envisioned to to go that far or some of these buildings to to recycle. I know that. I believe that any of the multifamily facilities are not required to have recycling or any. Any of those sustainability. Amenities, I guess you would call them, or. Charging stations for electric cars, things like that. I I'm wondering, is that something that? Has is discussed, it's envisioned, maybe just a little bit of comment on some of those other sustainability potential features.
Well, I do believe, I mean, there is, what is this, the sustainability checklist for. The buildings of a certain size, it's in the ordinance now. I forgot Travis with that title, but. That buildings need to make. Get so many points. And it through the charging stations and other things. So I believe we have some of that addressed in the zoning ordinance currently.
I think we call it a menu where they can.
Yeah.
Sort of rebuilding situation where they can select. Items from this. List and and. They get. In some ways can be incentivized to do other things. That are more sustainable. And they're rewarded sometimes with like an extra floor on a building that that's what that's what you're talking about, right, Roger?
Yeah, I think some of that. We'd have to look a little care, have some internal discussions, obviously. With our sustainability group, but I think some of that. May be addressed in in the ordinance already, but certainly we can. If the commission wants to see language in there, we can. Bring forward some language.
And I think that that would certainly apply to any new development. I don't know if it applies, would it equally apply to repurposed? So if something was, you know, being repurposed as we discussed and it was mentioned that that folks have an interest in that, would it apply to that? Or some of the, yeah, I think that's mainly it because the existing buildings are set. So it'd really just be for the repurposing.
Repurpose and we'd have to look and see.
Because new buildings are covered under the new. Yeah, grandfathered.
Okay.
That's a good question. Great question. Maybe Travis can tell us that. What's the line that you have to cross when you're. When you're redeveloping a building and repurposing a building. Where you have to meet all the new building standards like prewiring for EV chargers and et cetera.
That's a great question. I'm not sure it's entirely clear. I think the numbers are, you know, for new buildings, it's fifty thousand square feet to do the whole list and twenty thousand square feet to do a lesser point total. But if you're doing an interior design of a building. I am unclear off the top of my head whether we have to meet that or not. I'll have to go back and review that.
My sense is it probably would not apply at all. And so if sustainability is a goal in the Union Vision Plan, that we might want to. Make it apply as a direction in in the vision that I I'll defer to. The definitive answer from staff on whether it does or not.
We'll get clarity on that.
Okay.
That's that's one of those points where I think. They, the staff can can bring that to the to the hearing, and then if we. If 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 it is covered, then we don't have to worry about it. And if it's not, that's one of those amendments that we would want to make, I think, at our. Hearing. To this, Commissioner, Commissioner Peters, that's, I think, how this process would work. Rather than. Tentatively editing it now, I think.
I still think that as was noted that that was something that folks provided for in the comments. And it's already in here, so it's just providing more detail on it. So I don't, I don't think so. I I think it's definitely within the scope. It's not anything new or different. I certainly, if there was something completely new or different, wouldn't disagree, but but I think it's it's well within that scope. I'm getting near the end. I just wanted to talk about the public outreach process. I definitely, I live in a neighborhood that is outside of the box, not too far. But I certainly drive Union from pretty close to Jewel. Just the the next, just a couple of blocks up, all the way out to the six, and I take that route frequently. And obviously, I didn't receive a postcard or know much about it. My neighborhood was not targeted for the next door. Because I was outside of that area. I do think that homes and and neighbors in in this area coming all the way back who regularly use that that Union. Kind of they call it that last mile getting out to the six. I think. I think that. We're very involved. We drive that route every day. We go to businesses there frequently. I think that would be an area to to notify folks. But even just the houses on Union. That are just past Alameda. I was during the last election, I had walked around, talked to folks, I was involved. And in in the ward for elections and nobody. I spoke to many, many houses. I knocked on many doors. Not one person knew about this, nobody. And I tried to tell them and educate them and get people to be to be involved, but I think. Most of the houses in this area, we don't have neighborhood associations, so even if it shows on the map. That there was outreach to, there's just a few spotted neighborhood associations. My house doesn't have one and and a lot of the folks in in that area don't. I I would recommend maybe a postcard to to those houses. The I know a postcard was sent to two thousand businesses and homes, probably mostly businesses within that real central area. But there are a lot of affected people. Who I think have an interest in this. They shop, they're interested in in the traffic and they're interested in the design parameters, all of these. So just wanted to. Share that from background and experience and and the meetings. I wasn't able to attend the meeting somehow. Every single one was when there was an event at the high school. I don't know how it happened, but there was something going on. There was a band concert or something and. That I just didn't, it didn't work out for for a lot of the folks who live back in this area to physically attend, but I did. Provide responses on the survey because I'm obviously very engaged and interested at ten city council meetings, planning commission meetings. And. So anyways, just wanted to to share that feedback in terms of those residences and and neighbors that are still very close, just on the other side of Alameda. And Union on Union and the the streets that are are coming off of Union. And those neighborhoods are pretty close. I'm a little farther back, more towards Jewel.
Maybe Christie can tell us what did those neighborhoods. How were they contacted? So you're talking about off of Union just south of Alameda, so that's.
Yep, those people and those. Yep. Those, those people in those houses, they, they, they were not aware of this. Nobody was. Like literally zero of every house, every person I talked to, nobody.
I can speak to that really quick. Um, it looks like that area is part of the neighborhood organization area. And so we notified the contact, the registered contact person. We sent them a mail, a, a postcard.
Yeah, a lot of these organizations, there may be citizens groups, or there may be defunct. Or I'm, you know, it's not like an HOA necessarily where they're sending notices out. It's, I'm just gonna say that I, I, I don't even know about folks within the HOAs, if that got disseminated out. I, I don't think that contacting the heads of these neighborhood associations is really very effective. Especially in areas where there may be loosely defined on on the associations. Just something to think about for the future, and especially as we're bringing folks in, as we're wrapping this up, we're trying to finalize this. It'd be great to make sure that folks are aware, because as it was mentioned earlier, we don't want people showing up and saying, oh, I didn't know about this. Or, you know, they're coming in at the last hour. It's great to bring those people in as early as possible.
Yeah, I'd like to jump into and say, I lived in one of the neighborhoods that my neighborhood organization was contacted and they never contacted me. And I, as much as I appreciate all the effort that the staff put into this, I think we did see some issues like that. Where once you contact a neighborhood organization, the city has no way of knowing whether or not that's effective. And so I'm thinking, what can we learn from that? And and where I'm coming out is maybe we just do a direct mailing to the homes. I think that would be more effective. Can we get, go ahead.
Well, I just can say, I would agree with that. I think a direct mailing would be the best way. Or I don't know of cost or putting flyers. I mean, I was even thinking some of these homes, I'll put flyers up. I'll go door to door so people can get involved and be aware of it. I just felt really bad that nobody, nobody back in this part south of Alameda. In this Union area was was very aware, except for the folks that are the typical people who come to city council meetings. Or planning commission meetings that are, and and that's such a small percentage of the population.
I'll speak from my experience a little bit with the, the rezoning work that we did from two thousand nine, whatever it was till twelve. There were lots of, of different kinds of meetings and there were postcards that went to every home in Lakewood. I will interject that there were still people that would come to meetings and say, how come I didn't know about this? You know, that sometimes that will happen. That's not what you're talking about. You're talking about people that were just, didn't get the word from their association. Or it doesn't exist anymore. And so I think it's a, a great idea. I know in that process, there were a lot of people that gave, came to a lot of different meetings. And both neighborhood type meetings, but also to council chambers for a couple, three different presentations there. And I think that that's the, having that much input from that many people is what makes our job easier. And also the, easier in the sense that we're not trying to second guess what what people want. We're actually hearing what they want. And then ultimately, when it goes up to this, to the city council for them to, to pass or not. Or whatever, they, there's less chance of people coming up and saying, we didn't know anything about this. Now we really have a lot of criticisms. So I like that idea too. And so I know it's expensive to send out postcards, but that, I know it really worked well with the. With in two thousand nine and through twelve.
Great. I'm gonna move on to my next one. I, I heard.
Can I hear one, one thing? I'd like to get some direction on how far to go, or like, you know.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're always gonna get someone that says, I didn't get notified. It just happens. But I don't want to go to this, to the hearing and say, well, we went this far, but we should have gone this far. So if we can get some direction on.
Yeah, I would say the next door on next door should go, you know, even. Definitely to Jewel and even past a lot of those homes back, back in that area. Next door is inexpensive. And I know if I posted my neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods. It's like twelve or fifteen thousand people. And so I think even the next door wasn't posted in these neighborhoods. I think definitely it's free, it's inexpensive, it doesn't take very much time. I think that's, that's one recommendation. In terms of postcards. At the very least, I think those folks that are right, you know, just south of Alameda in in that neighborhood through there. Uh, I, I felt I would have liked to have had a postcard in my neighborhood. I know my neighbors are interested and and care. But even the folk, especially those folks that are, that are right up to, I don't know, maybe coming up to. It's hard to say. I can think of like Mississippi or Florida, at least up to Mississippi on Union, those houses in that neighborhood. And ideally up to Jewel. I understand that there's probably a cost, right, associated with mailing that out. So you, you'll have to look at that, but at the very least, maybe up to where the. Yeah, I think Mississippi probably is pretty good, maybe a street up from that, the elementary school. But, um, you know, maybe not as far as where I'm at. But the next door, definitely posting on next door. And, yeah.
Yep. And for notifying neighborhood associations, we heard from Daniels Wellchester neighborhood that they would like to be notified. They're the neighborhood just to the northwest. Not that they need to get an individual postcard. Just that their neighborhood organization gets one notification. I know it sounds kind of far away, but I've heard for being in Ward one, it would be nice if the Applewood Neighborhood Association gets notified. And again, not that they get door to door, but that their neighborhood association is notified.
It can be done.
And the other one, I know we talked about it earlier, but I think it's really important to have input from St. Anthony's Hospital. Both about traffic and and uses. I, I agree with your comment earlier, Roger. That, you know, in the corridor, that's not included because we're not looking at changing anything. That's already said. But certainly having input from, from those folks. And, um, and 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 just knowing that they've been contacted and and their input has been heard and incorporated.
We can do that. At least contact them and give them, give them a draft document and.
Yeah, exactly.
Do what we can, see if they have inputs.
Yeah, and I'm interested what they think is when I'm sitting in those stoplights, I'm sitting through two, three rounds of each of those, every stoplight. I sit, it goes, it's like, it's so, it's just, it's very grueling. And I think what if there's an ambulance that needs to come at this time? Do they have a plan? How, how are they going to do that? Because there's so much traffic. We're backed up. We can't even get everybody in a single cycle of a stoplight. Or even two cycles. A lot of the time, are we, you know, what, what is their plan? How, how do they work that out? How do they handle that with their emergency vehicles? And and what are the hours? I, I would have loved to have had like, I know, it's probably too extensive. But when they can actually meter and monitor the traffic, that might be a lot to ask. But and of course, now we're in COVID, so everything has changed. But, but certainly to understand during those rush hour, I don't know how long it is. I've been caught in it multiple times. It's usually around four to five, five, fiveish, four to fiveish, give or take. So.
So with regard to communication, Roger, do you feel like you have enough input from the commission?
I believe so. Hopefully, we can, we can do that. But again, we'll do our best. We always have people coming and saying they weren't notified. But what I've heard was, let me, let me kind of repeat. To look at some postcards south of Alameda. To the, to the residences, possibly down to Mississippi. I'll see if we, you know. We certainly can put a post on on next door and broaden that down the Jewel. And then we'll contact the Daniels, I believe we have, but it was Daniels Wellchester, Applewood, which we had in contact. And we'll make a outreach to St. Anthony prior to the hearing.
Yeah, and I, I would say some of the neighborhoods, even south of Jewel, because they all come and drive through this corridor too. On next door, I mean.
On next door.
Yeah, let's free, we might as well just, just put it to those, those neighborhoods, even Solterra. I, Solterra, every, they all take that corridor. So that's, that's probably those neighborhoods back in there. Next door, if you can just pick all those neighborhoods, that would be hopefully an easy, easy thing to do.
Roger, can you also post it in the, your hub, the supplement to the Denver Post? They have, they have a section in there of where they make announcements about various community or city.
Sure. Yeah. And the next doorstep, yeah, we can, that's an easy, low cost, no cost item that we can do.
Great.
Roger, I have a question about the, the timing of the next door notifications. What are you envisioning in terms of, of when that would, would happen?
I'd have to check. I don't, I don't, I'm not, we'll, we'll work through our public information officer there. What were you thinking? I mean.
My thought is, you know, a reasonable advance notice, and for me, that would be in the ten day to two week range. You know, I don't know what happened with the posting for, for my neighborhood. But folks I talked to who are on next door, there was no posting. So there was a glitch of some sort. And it's like, well, I always think about the, you know, advanced timing as a notice. And, and how there's probably a window that you're familiar with, where it's effective more so than other times. I don't want to see a one week notice. Three weeks would be too much. I think maybe you have some experience that would, would shed some light on what a good electronic notice window would be.
Okay. And that's a good point. Yeah, you, you, you do have to hit a window, otherwise you either don't get people's attention or it's too late.
Or they go, I'll look at that later and they don't.
So I would recommend to, if if it's possible for commissioners, like in your ward, to go to your council member meetings. It's a good forum to announce these things and let folks know who are there, it's occurring, if you're able to do that.
Oh, I, I think that's a great idea. And I would also add to that, if you have the opportunity to put something in. Your ward counselor's notices, their email letters, their newsletters that they usually send out in advance of these meetings. That would be great too. That's a good suggestion.
Absolutely, yep.
And I know Alan's gonna do it in Ward four. He's always good.
Yeah, I just, I got, I got it started, so I'll keep it up.
Commissioner Peters, you had another question or suggestion or?
Yeah, I, I heard in a previous meeting that there was a discussion about. Currently is allowed fifteen stories, hundred and eighty feet. And there was discussion about reducing that to ninety feet. And I know we had talked about that a little at the beginning of meetings. Is that, is that one of the metrics that that we're looking at specifically? I, my question, when I, when I listened and I made the note was, has this been done? Was this incorporated? It was discussed in an earlier meeting.
It was just discussed. I think that's what needs further review in terms of what. And Christie, jump in if I mis, misheard, but I don't think, I think that was part of a discussion. But I think again, building heights need much more in-depth analysis before we start.
I, I remember that discussion too. And I, I think that what happened was that we were limiting this to this. More narrow scope because for the vision plan. And I, this is where I think a, a separate, some suggestions. From the planning commission, building height, setback, some of these other things that are not in the, in the context of. Of clarifications or edits or that sort of thing, that they should be go, we should compile this and it should go forward. As our recommendations for considerations in the next step or in the next phase. Which is, I, I mean, after this would ultimately, if if it were approved and then go forward. The next phase is to look at zoning and and some other issues. But it seems to me that that would help the process and probably the quality of what we get back. The first time from, from that, that, that phase. I think phase two is what you call that.
Yeah, that sounds good. It sounds, and I think that's what Roger had suggested earlier in the meeting. That maybe we can put some language that we're looking at going in this direction. And to maybe focus on the details and specifics in that. But giving that the direction that we're not going to try and increase building heights. That we're looking at lowering them and we'll figure out the right, the right value for that.
Yeah, and that's, and that's the kind of thing that we, you know, would want to. Probably if, I mean, we're not really making a recommendation, but that that's what we're suggesting at this point. And I think if that's a, a supplement to this, some sort of. Next phase or phase two. Recommendations, items that came up in our discussions, I don't know how we would. Entitle this, but I think, actually, I think that would be a good title, items for, that came up in our discussions. That really apply more to phase two and that will guide that, that discussion.
Well, I think that's listed in the next steps. It's the overlay district. That's where, I mean, it's very clearly in the report. So as long as we give the guidance that we're going in this direction. And where we're gonna land, we'll have more study and more public input. So I think we're covered on that.
And I think that gives me a good intro to, I had one more thing for that guiding before the overlay. And I'm sorry, I didn't write down a page number for this. But the MGT and MCT areas are suggested in the draft. To mandate a mix of vertical uses along Union. And to be more consistent, I think with the comments that we've received, I'm wondering if we could. Add and clarify that the MGP and MCT areas would have a mix of uses. That they would be vertical mix along Union, but all of them would have a mix of uses.
I'm not sure I, that all, everything along Union would have a.
No, all of the MGT and MCT areas.
Would have a mix.
Would have a mix of uses, would mandate a mix of uses. And it already says that vertical mix is mandated along Union.
Kathy, I have a question. I'm sorry. Are you recommending that mixed use be, that every mixed use have both mixed use? It has residential and commercial or that?
I think that that specific discussion would be for a phase two for how that would look on the overlay. But yes, I am suggesting that MGT and MCT cannot be the single use of, of multifamily. High density residential, which they couldn't, and which in this draft plan, they could be. And I think the comments were very clear that we don't want to see more of that.
Okay.
And maybe we would have one building that was just multifamily, but it would be done in conjunction with. A actual mixed use development that included other uses.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, very good.
And I, I also have a.
Please go ahead.
This is sort of not as related. A comment, Commissioner Stone, I really like your idea of getting input back from these people, you know, that we took their words and suggestions. And, you know, created a beautiful document. But did we really capture it right? I think that is a wonderful idea to go back to those same people. And then I'm wondering when it comes to the, I'm sorry, Travis, I forgot the indoor, oh, indoor entertainment. There's also in the Community Resources Master Plan, we're looking at a new rec center sometime. I can't help but point out Ward one does not have one. Is there any public land in this Union? Is there any public land in this union area that could be used for a rec center?
Potentially the federal center, if there are. It's not public, it's public, it's not city, but it is a large piece.
I like the idea. But but the city does not own any land in there?
I don't think so. They have to acquire it, of course.
Probably not a parcel that would be large enough.
Yeah, that would be pretty expensive. Certainly, I mean, I I threw that out there, but I mean, seriously, the, should something happen at the fifty-nine acres, that certainly. Couldn't lend itself to something like that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big unknown, it makes it a little difficult to um. To give any guidance to try to navigate forward, I I think it's important to recognize. Um that it's there's potential, but there's also um uncertainty.
Yeah, very much.
What can happen, yeah.
So um uh and this, I think. As to Commissioner Peters' suggestion or that we don't need to have a separate document. The reason that that came up was because of previous meetings and study sessions, there were, there were some. Uh some items that commissioners wanted to include, I think Commissioner Hill, there were a couple that you were asking about. I just want to make sure that all the commissioners are satisfied that that their suggestions are being um taken and moved forward. Even uh in the last couple of sessions, we we talked about the fact that some of them were outside the scope of this vision document. And that there is a a next step, and that we just want to move forward in the process and then make those, but um. What are there, are there some of those um um? Outside the scope of this document that you want to uh to add to or as a supplement perhaps? About building heights setbacks, some other things that we've heard, or or are we satisfied with just? Eventually, i- if this passes, moving this forward and then going into phase two and then talking about those things. Um I know that Commissioner Peters had said, we don't want people, we want to raise building heights or make um setbacks even less than zero. I don't know what that would look like, um, but so so just to get some feedback from commissioners, do you? Are you satisfied with the kind of suggestions and edits that we're we're making? And that phase two will give us the opportunity to uh to um to chime in on those those other topics?
I have a question around that, I think that's an excellent um excellent question at this point. Um, one of my biggest areas of unknown is what's the highest and best use for this corridor? And I think we need to um reach a clear feeling about what that is, and then support that with the zoning. And overlay uh steps that would make that happen. And um so the question in my mind right now is um. Where's the best place to uh to accomplish this? Do we? Um, do we address that in the plan? Or do we address that in zoning? Basically, I'm talking about use, you know, which is a zoning issue, right?
So if I can piggyback on uh your your comment. I I didn't see this in the plan, but I saw it on the website, that there's um. There was a goal for this plan, and and I I don't remember all of the goal, but it had something to do with. Appropriate use, which I thought was really broad. Like way broad, what's appropriate? I like the best and highest use. And I don't know if there's a city way that you guys go about determining that, do you have a formula? Or something, but I I I found myself. Thinking that we can do, that we could do a lot more with this asset. Than just appropriate or something, so I I I'm just saying, I I guess I'm just echoing. I, yeah, I feel like we, there's more. There should be a higher, like a a better vision, best and highest use, maybe.
I'm kind of where I'm um. My thought process on this is that I'm looking at um city council's priorities for this year. Uh clear recognition of the need to um. Really delve into economic development. Um, the city's budgets, as we all know, um have been stretched for several years. Um, you know, we're a healthy city, but in terms of a a long-term vision and moving forward. What would be the highest, best use of this area, i- you know, is residential? Um with no infrastructure to essentially help it be successful, uh a highest and best use, or or would it be? Better to um. You know, in in the process of moving forward, to um do some deeper economic analysis. A full-blown study to determine what what's the potential economic impact to the city of. Different scenarios, um if we have a mixed-use scenario, it has a potential to to produce. Um, a certain amount of income, if we go more toward a a business use. Uh for the corridor, um could that generate? Another revenue stream that, you know, by supporting business with people who um aren't necessarily. Um having cars around after work, sort of thing. Uh, that's kind of my my approach, is that I think in our, in our really deep dive here, we want to um be sure to look at all. Of the potential best ways forward, um so that we can, you know, arrive at a plan. That uh that we feel will serve the city's needs.
Which brings me to my big point, guys. And I, you know, I know you put a lot of work into it, and it's a great plan, and I don't, I'm hoping that this recommendation is not going to. That it just be a matter of maybe adding here and there in the plan. But I felt like it was uh siloed, I found myself wondering. Where's the reference to the economic development plans, where are the references to the housing study? Plans, where where's the reference to the Smart Growth Initiative, where the biggest thing, I I found myself. I found myself astonished that we did not tie this vision back to the comprehensive plan goals. Did I miss that? Like the where we go into the principles, that's a natural place. On page thirty-one, where we could tie those back to those comprehensive plan goals. I I'll be honest, I cannot support this plan with that huge vacuum. How does this fit that? How does this help us achieve that plan? And it's not there, so I felt like this was a little siloed and uh. I I I'm not saying redo it, I think we can, I think you can add these things in.
Yeah, Commissioner Stone, if I could um dovetail on that, I I appreciate the comment, it kind of, um I think clarifies. Um where I'm coming from, and I certainly by no means uh would suggest that we um. You know, we not move forward, but I think our our forward motion should include um, you know, some deeper analysis on. Um on the economic impact, you know, uh there is um a reference in the comprehensive plan. It says the stability, the city's ability. To capture new opportunities will depend somewhat less on having the lowest business costs or lowest taxes than on having a higher quality of life. Than its competitors, and I I think, you know, Lakewood has um a high quality of life, and what we do long term in terms of a vision. In this corridor um needs to be viewed through the lens of um long-term quality of life in Lakewood. So that's that's kind of where I was coming from on that.
I'd like to weigh in in response to those if I could for a second, um. Staff has been put in a really tough spot here in that. When we went through the development dialogue process, um we suggested and talked about a full plan and. The council members at the time said, you know, what does that take in terms of time? And we said, to do it properly, to do all these things that we are all talking about tonight, that's going to be a year or more of of work on on the. On staff's time, and council gave us the direction. We want something shorter and simple. We want something that's going to take four to six months, and you can narrow it down. We talked with council and they said, narrow it down to just design and a brief look at land use. So those two things, and you're all right, you know, an ideal plan would include all of these things that we're talking about. But council wanted a quick plan that looked at two things, and now we haven't delivered them a quick plan, we're we're still going on this plan, but. I just want to point out that that, you know, our normal plans would have looked at all of these things, and we were given direction to. Really narrow our focus and try to make it quick.
Travis, can you help me out with um where and when were you given that direction? I have talked to city council members and the direction that I understand they gave. Was that we need to take a look at all of the neighborhood and corridor plans that were incorporated into the zoning ordinance. And determine what the best way forward is, not, I'd never heard anything from anybody about a timeline.
Yeah, thi- this was specifically around the idea of uh creating um. Some overlay areas and some design guideline areas, and we had to discuss, this was all development dialogue discussion, we had discussion around.
So this was in the ad hoc committee, right?
An ad hoc committee, and we had discussions around, let's get a quick plan out with some development, some design guidelines, so we can get this design. Review committee going. Um, now Roger and I both pushed back at a quick plan. And we said, you know, there's no such thing as a quick plan. Um, but we were given guidance to, you know. Narrow the focus, narrow the focus down to these two things and get us something in four to six months, and. We've we've failed at that, we we've done our best, uh it has taken well more than four to six months for a variety of reasons, and there goes my light. But I want to point out that that's how we got to where we are. Um, so we're hearing, we heard from council, we haven't dealt with council on this in a while, we heard from council, do it short and and narrow. And we keep getting pushed back, it's not enough, it's not enough, it's not enough, so we're we're in a tough spot.
And we did get it um initially in the timeframe, but we, you know, it it didn't move forward. So it's.
Yeah, it turned out to be a a very complicated problem and, or not a problem, but a process and. It's a, it's a complicated thing to um to embrace a a new vision on an area um. You know, approach like this, so um I certainly, like I said before, I really appreciate all the work that's going into it, but. Um, I think it's better to produce um a work product that can uh have. Hope of going forward than it is to produce something uh in a quicker timeline that will be probably sent back.
Maybe maybe I can make another suggestion, that maybe we could send council just the piece that they asked for. Maybe we could send them some design guidelines for this corridor.
What is the? Go ahead, go ahead, finish, please.
I mean, it, what we were asked to provide to council specifically was design guidelines, so that they can move forward on. Creating a design review committee, and that would start its work here in the Union Quarter, so that new buildings would get an aesthetic review. Secondarily, we had talked about an overlay zone, it sounds like that's going to get more complicated, because we need a lot more discussion on. What the right setbacks are, what the right hearts uh heights are, and et cetera. I wonder if we bifurcate this and send council what they asked for, and then spend some more time on the other pieces.
That seems to make sense to me, uh especially because um it is important to build the structure of the design review committee. I don't see that as necessarily connected to this project, that's going to be a part of all of these um. Neighborhood and corridor plans, so I certainly uh think that's a good suggestion.
I I I'm not sure, I think it's theoretically sound. However, what you are sending them are recommendations that have not been tied to the comprehensive plan, so that. I I would say at least tie your recommendations to the to the goals of the comprehensive plan, at least, because if it's not based in that. I I mean that, I just, yes, please.
But well, I I I would like to, you know, I I I would say that that they are tied to the comprehensive plan, this is a. Identified as the comprehensive plan, a growth area, an area that needed more. Attention, I don't think there are, you know, I don't want to get into big discussion, but I don't think there are big conflicts between. What's being recommended and the comprehensive plan, whether we've gone to enough depth. Um on the land use side, and and throughout this whole process. I've been trying to manage expectations, you know, and and again, what Travis said. This is what our mark, you know, this is what our direction is, to look at. Land use, and and if you look at the land use changes, they're not all that um detailed, I think some of these. Recommendations can be addressed in design guidelines, but really to. Move forward so that design guidelines and standards can be developed for specific areas, and they're different for different areas. So I'm saying, I think we're not. In disalignment with the comprehensive plan, we might not be referencing it enough, but I think we. I I don't see the conflict. Whether we're going to enough depth on the land use, we just didn't, don't have the. Um, we knew going into it, we 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 don't have, we didn't have the time or the resources to do that. So, I don't know, just putting that out there.
You think we could maybe ask um council or maybe the Development Dialogue Committee for some clarification, because um. Having been at that meeting, I really thought that the goal was to have neighborhood plans, um you know, like. Many neighborhoods used to have that were actually amendments and part of our comprehensive plan, and that that was the overall goal. And this was just the first one, and maybe um, so I think that, and I think Development Dialogue Committee is getting ready to meet. So maybe we can ask them for clarification.
And and again, when when we talked about this, to, and I had talked to the Development Dialogue Committee. And you know, this would be a neighborhood plan, this particular one would be a neighborhood plan narrower in scope than what we had done. Before, you know, focusing on what we're just talking about, land use and design. But certainly, however you want to discuss it, um.
I I think that we, um I agree with Roger that it does, uh. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan, I think to to Commissioner Stone's um comment, maybe. With there should be some more references to the comprehensive plan and to the sustainability plan, I think even Commissioner Peters brought that up earlier. Even something as simple as um as uh. Um ensuring that these uh guidelines and recommendations are consistent with the comprehensive plan. And with the sustainability plan, which can both change, we don't want to an- address specific things necessarily, because those can change. And as long as we we say that there it's going to to follow those guidelines or or the uh the comprehensive plan and the sustainability plans. Uh I think that that may be enough.
Would you also, I would also recommend, I'm sorry, I would also recommend on page thirty-one, that the principles are tied to the goals. I think that's something that could be pretty easily done, in addition to the framing that Chairman Miller is referring to.
That's a good suggestion, yes. Are there other places where you'd like to see it uh that the comprehensive plan, the sustainability plan referenced, or? Yes, sir, Commissioner Kong.
Might want to go uh go to uh five dash thirty-four of the Lakewood twenty twenty-five. And um take a look at the goals then, because it does um, you know, goal. I think it's I dash G A seven, uh and be. Continue to implement and annually evaluate the recommendations for the Union Boulevard Corridor, Federal Center Connectivity Plan. And the Union Boulevard Corridor Urban Design Study. Now, you know, that's what we're doing right now, I think, um, and um, but, you know. Link right back to that, uh we're simply moving to an update. Um, and of course, that, uh the Lakewood um. Twenty twenty-five does lump together the Federal Center and the Union um. Boulevard or Union uh. Well, they call it Union Boulevard and Federal Center Growth Area. So I'll mention that in passing, just so we know where we're linking.
Very good. Everyone? Okay, very good, excellent. So um Roger and Christie, do you feel like you have all that you need to? So um Roger and Christie, do you feel like you have all that you need to uh make adjustments and edits? And and whatever red lines there are that are.
I have one last question.
Of course.
It's the last one.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, right. We heard that before.
In terms of the um, I I know that in each of the areas, there's disallowed uses. And I was wondering if anybody has looked at. Are there businesses that currently exist in those areas? That will become disallowed uses. And I know I heard in a previous meeting. It was mentioned that there was maybe an auto shop, but that there would be a process that nobody else could come in. But as long as that business stayed there, then they would still be allowed for use. But what I'm curious is, are there others? Is that the, is that the only one? Or I'm not even sure if that was an actual example. Um but I'm just interested to know what businesses would potentially be in those areas. That in the future would be disallowed.
Or or residences, can I add on? Or residences within Planning Area Three? Are there any of those that would be displaced? Thanks for letting me piggyback.
Let me try and I have to, again, these are recommendations and again, they would. Be taken to the next step, which would be zoning. So they could, again, these are the overall. I don't, I don't believe, I think you were, your um example is correct. There's a like a auto. Gas station or something that may be. Um it would be a nonconforming use and I think that's. That would need to be addressed. Actually, all of the uses would need to be reexamined. When we get this, should we get the zoning, you know, so those, these are initial recommendations. But the recommendation would be that any existing business and it would have to be structured that way, would be able to continue. And would not, you know, they've been, they'd be um existing. Nonconforming, so they could continue as long as they were in business. But those are details that would need to be worked out. But I don't think we have, we can take a closer look, but I really don't think there's more than one or two that would would apply.
That'd be great. And just maybe send an email to everybody. I would just be interested. Which businesses would be impacted? Do you know in terms of the auto one, do you know what it is? Which one?
Yeah, there's a, there's a Miles Automotive, then there's also a Pioneer Drilling. And there's also a Green Mountain Garden Shop and a Car Wash and uh an office building all off of the dead end of Cedar. At Union Boulevard. It's a little kind of a pocket of industrial. Um so there's a number of them right there. Um and Roger, you may be aware of of any additional. I know some already have uh have changed as new hotels hotels were built, but those are several that I'm aware of.
So there's at least five that you mentioned?
Uh well, there's yeah, at least five.
Okay, I'm I'm surprised. I don't think there are.
I mean, the the car wash and um the one little um two-story office building might. Work just fine when you punch Cedar through uh toward um Route Street. But uh that would go straight through Pioneer Drilling. Uh the Miles Automotive on the north side of of Cedar there might stay, might not. I don't know. I believe it would uh it would take out the uh part or at least part of. Um the um aggregate, the materials company, Green Mountain Garder Shop, Garden Shop. So there are a number that um would be impacted.
I guess I'm a misunderstanding because I thought your question was with the zoning, which would be nonconforming. I think you're talking about if you put in a street.
This would be, yeah, I'm I'm leaping ahead, I guess, to the implementation. The infrastructure that would be needed to support um the changes.
No, I think we're talking about two different things.
Yeah, I think we are talking about two different things.
Um so Commissioner Commissioner Peters, you were talking about businesses that would that would, their that use would not be allowed. This did come up in previous meetings and and what I recall is is what Roger was just saying, that's the um they'd be grandfathered in, they're they're nonconform.
But we can, you know, and I think that's a short list. The other one is more complicated because we have to start thinking about. What the road would look like, how much, how wide, you know, that's that's another level of complexity.
And and that other question that Commissioner Heald brought up, that was part of that connectivity plan. I was asking for which which areas are not under, you know, jurisdiction of the city. And that or private, so that hopefully would be taken care of in that map when when that, when we have the second map.
We could look at it, yeah, but but to to start identifying businesses and, you know, that's another level of complexity. But we certainly can identify where there is right of way and where there's a planned road and where there isn't. Taking a next step further is. More complex, but we certainly can, yes, in in the map, that's what we're addressing. To get back to your question, I think we have an understanding of. Kind of the areas where there would be potential language changes where we could put in a, we call a red line document. For for planning commission prior to the meeting or to be addressed at the meeting. Um the other thing I heard was for sure the notification issues. And then some of the other comments um like related to stormwater, follow up. And the follow up on, it was just brought up. On the nonconforming businesses. So that's sort of what I'm hearing summarized.
And is there any way to address the issues with the traffic? And I know we discussed that earlier and the fact that um really in that study. It it doesn't even account for the traffic that's there today, has that point five percent growth versus the one percent. Which is what's expected in the comprehensive plan. It it even, I think. There was some data that it's even higher than than that in that area. And how that would impact, you know, looking at the, also the scenario of high traffic. And high walking pedestrian traffic cars with the, is there a way? To bring some of that information in?
That's um. I don't know, um the best way, I mean, you know, that's been done. I know you, I I understand where you're coming from. I'm just trying to think of the best way. To address that issue. And maybe that's something that's planning commission addresses separately. I don't know, you know, with. As part of a comment, but it certainly was beyond, as I mentioned. I I want to keep bringing this up, but it was beyond the scope of what we're looking at. And um we could certainly list it as a concern.
Yeah, that that would be helpful. I mean, I think even just some mention of it. Because I know that the underlying, some of the the underlying information or foundation of this. Related to trying to build around residential around transit. And now that transit is down, traffic is up, it's only going to get worse. It kind of takes out that, some of that initial thinking. I I don't know how, and I understand that it's obviously some heavy lifting. A traffic study is not inexpensive. And you know, that that study really wasn't very useful for what we're trying to do here. So maybe just noting the the traffic, I guess, making some some note of that. And maybe the 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 RTD ridership is down. I I'm not sure how to bring it into the context, but it's very relevant. Because some of those underlying assumptions and foundations for some of the changes are are not. Um it's important information in looking at 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 what we're planning to do here.
Okay, we can look at some language, maybe. I don't even start proposing language, but I think we can look at addressing something like that.
I think that.
At a very high level, very high.
Yeah, yeah.
To go on our our supplemental list, that the uh items that are outside the scope of of this. Vision plan, um but that we want to be sure that we address in the in the, as we go forward. Because I I agree and and transportation is one of those that has been brought up before in the previous meetings. So I I'm I'm sure that other commissioners feel like they'd like to have that on on our list of. Our hit list.
It needs continued discussion, I agree too.
Yeah, and I like, I like, I think Roger's had a lot of good suggestions.
Development and other sorts of things too. I think uh Alan, Commissioner Heald already mentioned that. But it's again, outside the scope of of this right now, but it's not something that we want to just ignore. I'm sorry, please go ahead, Commissioner Peters.
Sure, no problem. Yeah, I I think that that Roger had has had really good suggestions and making note at a high level. And then they'll get addressed in in the phase two. I I I like the direction as how he's kind of represented. How to address a number of these things. So I'm I'm eager to see the results.
Very good.
And some of these, certainly we can, and so and obviously to implement some of this. At great detail, hopefully there's resources available. That's all I'm going to say.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, can I circle back? Can I circle back around to the question that I that I put out there? And Planning Area Three, are there any residents uh that are going to be displaced?
We can double check, I don't believe so.
Also answer this, so if you go.
Yeah, we can respond to that one too, when we.
Go to page um. Twenty-six of the vision plan. Um this gives you, it shows the current land uses. And you can see that there are no, there are currently no residential in the planning area three.
Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Okay, great, thanks, Christie.
And Commissioner Cohen?
Just very briefly, I'm I'm looking at page thirty-eight. And in in terms of all the discussion we've had about traffic, we might want to, I don't, I'm not ready to do a draft on this yet. But we might think about adding to the recommendations there. Um and and frame another recommendation or more recommendations for that page. In terms of managed traffic flows on Union Boulevard. You know, to just talk about alternatives is somewhat inadequate. We can always wish that uh RTD will pick up again. And uh but another thing that I think we ought to be clawing our way to long term. Is getting that connection route between Cedar and Route Street across six. I know that's a long kind of a daydream maybe at this point, but it's not impossible. There could be funding out there somewhere in the future. And that's a good recommendation, but we might think about some others.
Okay, very good. So. Any other, any other issues? Can we? You have enough to work on, to work with? I think we uh went through that already and you've reviewed them. I think we're all set unless. Uh it seems like there's consensus that we're moving in the right direction, so let's do that and we'll plan on that. Uh Ju- July fifteenth is what you had suggested. I guess everyone probably needs to go and check their calendars. I I suppose Aaron's going to send out a. A request regarding uh availability for July fifteenth. Okay.
Yes.
All right, very good. I think that looks to me like we are, we are wrapping that up then. Very good. Nicely done. And uh Travis, it's to your comment about this being prolonged. It has been a little bit of a prolonged and uh process. We had to recover some territory, which I think was just the right thing to do because we had um so so much turnover on the commission over the last year. That's, you can't help that. Very good. Okay, so we will uh uh close this portion of the or the the study session anyway. End that and and uh open the uh the Planning Commission. Uh meeting for the purposes of electing officers.
Um for, uh just to note, the time is ten oh eight for closing the study session. I don't know if we'd like to take a a brief recess before starting the special meeting.
I think it's a good idea.
Just to clarify, um the study session is not ending, right? It's, we're still continuing.
This session is, and we've, we've also posted, I I should check with Paul to be make sure about the language. Where we, we posted a a meeting for the purpose of electing officers, so the study session.
Podcast continues though, Christie.
Yes, Christie, the the live stream will continue. The, we're actually closing the the. Study session and then we're opening the regular meeting for election of officers.
Thank you.
You were talking about the live stream. Yeah, that's right. It is continuing. We don't want to miss any of this. So the uh, let's take a, let's take a break. Is is five minutes long enough? Okay, all right. We'll come back at uh, how about ten fifteen? Thank you, everyone.
All right, here we go. Sorry.
What's behind the screen, Teresa?
It's just an open window. Pay no attention to the
The man behind the curtain?
Yeah, the man behind the curtain. Thank you, thank you. Very good. Who's Alex is back here? Well, we'll give Alex a minute here. Johan, do you mean to have your hand raised still? Ah, okay. I didn't know if you were trying to to speak.
No, I was I realize that, you know, it doesn't go away when I, after I speak, so I'll try to be more alert.
This technology is not very smart. Alex is back. Great, thank you. So we're, the, the purpose for this meeting is just to elect officers. I'm currently Chair. Johan is, is Vice Chair and our Secretary is no longer on the Commission, I believe. Is that right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, so Erin, we can have you lead this or if you'd like.
I'll, I'll begin with a Paul, did you have something to say?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll begin with a roll call just to make sure that everyone is present. Commissioner Bartlett?
Here.
Commissioner Cohen?
Here.
Commissioner Heald?
Here.
Commissioner Kentner?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Peters?
Here.
And Commissioner Stone?
Here.
We do have a quorum. The time is ten seventeen. And the first item of business, or and the only item of business is officer elections. The bylaws call for a secret ballot and we have determined that through the process we're using with the webinar. We do not have the chat function that we thought that we would have. There are several options. If everyone has access to their City of Lakewood email account, I can send an email with my phone number and could receive a text message for secret ballot, but the bylaws do call for a secret ballot.
We in the past, given the commissioners, the option is, is if even one commissioner wants a, a secret ballot, then that's how we do it otherwise, so.
The other option is somebody would make a motion to elect officers via voice vote and we could voice vote the election of officers as well, but we would need a motion a second and then approval from the commissioners to do the voice vote.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we hold elections by voice.
And that was Commissioner Miller, you second?
Yes.
Okay.
Which I can do even on his chair.
And Erin?
Is there, is there any discussion?
All in favor? You can say yes or raise your hand if you want to do both.
It is unanimous.
All right.
I'd like to go ahead and nominate Commissioner Heald to be our Chair for this year.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other nominations for Chair?
I don't know. I'll self nominate just because I have been doing it and
And I'll second.
Okay, and Erin votes for Commissioner Heald?
All those in favor of electing Commissioner Heald, say aye or raise your hand. And all those opposed?
Oh, opposed, sorry.
Five to two.
Five to two. The A's have it. Commissioner Heald, you have you have been elected the Chair. The next item would be the election of Vice Chair.
Okay, absolutely. So I will thank you first of all and thank you Dale for your service. So we will open the nominations for Vice Chair.
He's supposed to nominate. Well, I'll go ahead and I would like to nominate Commissioner Stone for Vice Chair.
A second, please.
It looks like Commissioner Cohen.
And that was Commissioner Heald, did you second?
The nomination.
I think, I think Commissioner Cohen and I both did.
Okay.
All right, all those in, are, are there any other nominations?
I nominate Commissioner Miller for Vice Chair.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of nominee, of Commissioner Stone as Vice Chair? Say aye or raise your hand.
Mrs. Commissioner Stone's not gonna vote for her, so.
All those opposed? All right. There are four in favor and three opposed. Commissioner Stone?
No.
You've been elected Vice Chair.
She waited till the last second to raise her hand.
And that is the only item of business that we have.
Actually, we have a Secretary of the Commission to elect as well. So I would like to open for, the floor for nominations for Secretary.
And, and before, before you give a nomination, Chair Heald, just want to let everybody know that the, one of the responsibilities of the Secretary of the Commission, you may have to sign some documents for us, so not sure how that will happen when we're not having people come into the office.
Yeah, I can give you my fax number. You can fax it to me. I'll sign it and fax it back.
Right, but I'm saying this, the Secretary has some documents also that they specifically sign as well, so the Chair and the Secretary are both, will both be responsible for signing documents. That's something you don't want to do. I just, I just want to let you know that that's one of your responsibilities as well.
So, do we have nominations for Secretary?
I'll nominate Commissioner Bartlett.
A second. Any other nominations? So, Mr. Schultz, do we need to hold a vote?
There will still need to be a vote, yes. All those
Are, are, okay, last call on nominations. Okay, to you, Erin.
All those in favor? Say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
All those opposed?
You can't oppose yourself, Alex.
I was gonna say, do I have to vote either way? You count me as an aye, yeah. Thank you.
You actually could oppose yourself.
No. That'd just be weird. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Erin, I have a question. At the last meeting we had on the agenda, General Business, which we did not cover. And maybe this is a question for Mr. Rice. Do we cover that now?
You, you, you may. If you've got some general business that you want to share or bring up with the Commission, we, we can go into that now as well.
Yeah, I'd like to first just open, open the floor for any general business items that people may want to bring up. Do we have any? Any hands raised? Mr. Kentner?
I have two things, if nobody else has anything. I know that some of us have spoke to, spoken one-on-one with a couple of you and I don't know if staff has, if there's been any conversation with staff about changing our rules and regulations and I was kind of wondering where we are in that and if we want us to schedule a study session or something to begin the process of of editing or revising, I guess, our policies and procedures or rules and regulations. I'm not sure which they're called.
Yeah, I believe we call them rules and regulations now based on the last edition, two thousand nine, I believe. Paul could correct me if that's wrong, but I, my suggestion along that line would be to have a stud, to schedule a study session to have a candid, you know, discussion about what we need to do with regard to updating policy and procedures. It's been a number of years. I think there are places where we can improve things. I know Commissioner Miller, before I was on the Commission, made this suggestion. I believe it was early in nineteen, twenty nineteen. And I think it's a good suggestion. So I'd like to propose that we schedule a study session to discuss a framework for going forward with revisions.
Okay. So what, what, you don't have to answer this question this evening. We'll follow up kind of with an email. So we haven't, we haven't met as a, I think this is the, the first actual meeting as a, as a Commission. So, regular meetings are first and third Wednesdays of the month, seven PM, and then study sessions are second and fourth Wednesdays of the month at seven PM. So we can, we can hold to that schedule. If for some reason we wanted to do, pick another date or another time, we can do that. So we'll follow up with an email. We'll look, we'll come up with a couple of dates on the next second and fourth Wednesdays. Pull everybody's availability and, and we'll go from there. And if somebody has some other option, they can throw that out. So Erin will be following up with an email.
Interject if I could. You know, I would like everybody to take a look at the, the policy and procedures and, and my understanding of the language is that we have a little flexibility. You know, it says that public hearings are, are held, or regular study Planning Commission meetings are held first, generally held first and third, but Paul, I guess the question is, are we, do we have flexibility to change the one on the third to a study session?
We do, we do. We could, we could, we could, we could change that as well. So that, that's kind of the, the discussion if there's some flexibility. I mean, we could even pick another date as long as we notice and so forth, the, the meeting. But that was just kind of a general, what's in the, the rules and regulations, i.e. the bylaws. And then we can tweak that as we go. So if we need to use the regular meeting for a study session, we can convert that as well.
Very good.
And then I did have one other thing for general business. I was wondering if after getting the email from Mr. Tuthill and reading through all those documents, I'm hoping that we could schedule, and this one I was hoping that we could do sooner rather than later, that we could schedule a meeting of the Board of Adjustment so that we as a board can talk about legal, our legal, the lawsuit against us.
With regard to that, Paul, do we, since the Board of Adjustments doesn't meet on a regular schedule, although it was designed to meet on a regular schedule, according to the bylaws, do we need to convene a regular meeting of the Board of Adjustments in order to move forward on this, or can we make a decision here?
I think, I, I think I'm not hearing your question properly.
We're not in a Board of Adjustment meeting tonight, so can, can we schedule a Board of Adjustment meeting? Or do we need to convene a Board of Adjustment meeting on a Tuesday as it's generally held in order to set a meeting?
Right, and that goes back to, you've got some flexibility with the Board of Adjustment as well, picking dates, and that's where we, we set Wednesdays as well. So we will pull both. We'll pull for availability for a BOA meeting for discussion regarding the lawsuit and then we'll pull for the bylaws as well. And, and you probably want to keep those two separate. It's just cleaner to keep the, the two bodies separate and the two meetings separate. We have in one, I don't think we, I don't think we've actually had a meeting where we have the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment function on the same night, so.
I don't see any urgency to have them back to back. I, I agree. We could, you know, sort of follow the, the, the protocol that's laid out and have a Board of Adjustment on a Tuesday and then a regular meeting or a study session rather of the Commission on a Wednesday.
Okay.
Since this one's a little more time sensitive, could we throw out a couple of possible dates now?
Kentner, has, has Mr. Tuthill asked for some action by the Board?
No, I am asking for us as a board to meet so that we can discuss how the direction we want to take.
Is this, is this to basically discuss his answer filed on behalf of the Board?
Yes, one of, you know, one of the, and I don't want to get too much into a legal discussion here because I think that that's
That's
inappropriate.
Meeting, right.
You know, that, that's the reason to have a meeting is so that we can discuss this this lawsuit and what has been filed on our behalf.
Did that, I'm wondering if that meeting should be an executive.
Right, I, I would assume, I agree Travis, absolutely.
That's certainly important to make that decision.
But we need to convene a meeting to have an executive session on it, right?
All right, that, that's how that would work in, in terms of flow is we would convene a meeting and then call an executive session. Is that right, Travis?
That sounds, I, I need to chat with the attorneys about all of it, but yeah, that sounds like the way it would probably work.
And this would be just for us? I'm not asking for, I know resources are tight, you know, I know Mr. Rice, Paul mentioned that to me in an email. I'm not asking for us to spend money, but for us as a board to discuss this.
I think in light of the fact that we have new Commission members, i.e. Board members, since the last action in this, it would be appropriate to have a discussion. So do we want to propose potential dates? Or you, Paul, you said you would do a, an email poll.
Right, I can do that, but I heard Commissioner Kentner say she would like to propose a couple of dates.
Well
No means.
Just sort of, are we talking about, would, you know, would people, again, because there are motions with deadlines, do we know what the next sort of deadline is when something's going to be filed?
For the Board of Adjustment or the Planning Commission? Is that what you're asking, calendar? Or are you?
That wasn't exactly what I was, I was asking, so I'll just go about this a different way. Today's June 3rd. We were already planning to meet on June 17th.
Correct.
So I would propose that we have a Board of Adjustment meeting on June 17th.
July?
June, two weeks from today. We were already planning to meet.
Oh, is there a meeting on?
But the hearing got, I'm assuming indefinitely postponed.
Could we do it on a?
Res zoning scheduled Travis after this that we, we pushed with a direction from the attorney and council coordination. Yeah.
So Paul, don't, I mean, our usual lead time for advertising, for getting materials and to advertise a meeting is four weeks, but we can do it less if we don't have an item that we have to notice, right?
Right.
Correct.
We need to notice the meeting, but there's not a packet for you to guys to do or any material for you to prepare.
Okay.
And there's nothing that we can share really with the public, you know, put out there for the public because we're going to have an executive session on an appendic legal matter.
Right.
Didn't the meeting on the 17th get pushed out?
Yeah.
So that's open time currently, correct?
Correct.
So that's, that's a time that we could do the rules and regulations. Or we could do, we could do rules and regulations on the 17th and on the 16th, do a Board of Adjustment the Tuesday. Rather than, we don't want to do them back to back as you, as you illustrated, it's, it's not appropriate.
I may not be available on the 16th.
Well, how do you?
I think I might be. Okay, I'll have to check.
Yeah, Paul, what do you, what do you propose?
I think, I think we should follow up with all of this with an email tomorrow, rather than decide this on the fly right now. If I can ask Erin to put an email out tomorrow with a couple of possible dates for meetings.
Okay.
And I'll chat with the attorneys to see what process we need to go through. For, especially for the BDA, but it'd be good to include the attorney then the, in the policy procedure meetings as well because they're going to be integral to that discussion.
Okay, well, my, my initial thought on the policy and procedures is I, I think it would be more proactive if we have our first meeting to get our, our focus and develop a game plan for the items that we want to look at. I don't know that we would really require the services of legal at that meeting. I think if, if you suggest that, we could do that, but I'm not sure it's necessary at the first one. Because I think the first one, I would, you know, characterize it as a focus meeting. And then beyond that, we would certainly need that input.
Since we're sitting as separate board, as a Board of Adjustment, where we may want to elect officers for the Board of Adjustment when we do as a Board of Adjustment.
That's a good point, Ms. Cohen. I do appreciate you bringing that up. We hadn't been through that in a while.
There haven't been very many meetings of the Board of Adjustment, that's for one thing.
Yeah.
Isn't the membership of the Board of Adjustment the same as the Planning Commission?
It is. It is, and I believe, let's see, hold on. That what we have done in the past, and I can't, I'm, I'm looking at the rules and regulation. If, if you hear me use the term bylaws, I'm referring to rules and regulations are the same. The officers for the Planning Commission typically serve as the officers for the Board of Adjustment as well.
That's my understanding.
And, and provide that to to the commission.
Yeah, I would, Paul, would it be to really complete the process in in line with the policies and procedures there? Wouldn't we need to simply hold an election to make that decision to, to have the board or the officers for the Planning Commission serve as the officers for the Board of Adjustment? It's not really automatic. I know that's been the pattern and I think it would be an easy process to simply do that. That way, you know, as Commissioner Cohen points out, we would be in alignment and we would be following the proper rules and regulations of the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
We can make, yeah, we can make a motion to that extent.
Very good. So we will look for the emails polling on dates. Is there any other general business?
Well, Commissioner Stone had asked in an email a while back and I never saw a response if we have a regular meeting scheduled.
Not at this time. We, excuse me, did someone say something?
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Not a regular meeting where we would hold a public hearing. On the June 17th meeting, we did have a rezoning item. I don't have the exact address off the top of my head that we were calendaring for that, that night and the advisement from the city attorney and, and counsel is that we push all items that are quasi judicial out. So that meeting has been postponed. We're looking at a date in July. I have not gotten confirmation if we're coming to, back to the, to the Planning Commission with that rezoning request in July. We also have a second rezoning request. We don't have a formal submittal. It's hanging out there. It could possibly be ready in July, August as well. So there are two formal items. One that is probably closer to coming to the commission and, and one that should be scheduled mid to later this year. But we haven't got to go ahead to, to calendar those meetings yet.
Okay, um, so hearing no more general business?
I'm sorry, I'm going to be difficult and say one more thing. Use, because our rules and regulations and like what's, I mean, it says we meet on Tuesday and, or on the second and fourth. Is it the second or no, first and third Wednesday?
Yeah, generally.
Wednesday of every month unless it's canceled.
Right.
So, you know, I know I promised that I would be available every first and third Wednesday when I, you know, agreed or did my interview and all. And so are we canceling the 17th? Are we planning to have a meeting on the 17th?
So you. Mr. Rice is going to poll on possibly having the study session on 17th, is that right?
Yeah, that's what we were going to follow up with the email tomorrow. And Travis is going to have a conversation with the city attorney as well. So right now, we have the 17th. We're going to look at the, the commission's availability as well and then get back with a response, 17th year or name. We'll have that tomorrow.
Yeah, with respect to Commissioner Kentner's question, I think it would be appropriate to operate the way I see other commissions and and groups operating with regard to Lakewood Speaks is the regular meetings are posted. And if, you know, and the meeting can be canceled up until 24 hours before the meeting. So I think we should follow the same practice so that the meetings are scheduled as the, the documents say they should be. And if we, if we don't actually have business of substance to conduct a meeting, then we do the cancellation. That would align with how others do it. If there's a mystery about whether or not the Planning Commission meets, then that would kind of clear it out with regard to the public is, is the meetings are scheduled and they can be canceled.
And will there be polling to make sure that nobody has general business items before a meeting is canceled?
I would say not. I mean, that kind of gets into, I think, agenda setting a little bit, which is something I'll probably learn about in my orientation as chairman. Paul, any input on that?
Right, we would, so essentially, another way to answer the question, is there anything coming before the commission in the, the near term? And my response was no. So I would go ahead and then post that the meetings are canceled for the next couple of months. And I can do that because we have, we have a calendar where things are submitted that we get onto Lakewood Speaks. And so I can look forward into the future and say they've missed these dates. So I can go ahead and, and cancel those. Cancel the regular meetings.
Regular meetings.
Study sessions are still available for topics that the commission want to talk to. So the regular meetings are generally for hearings. The other meetings are, are other meetings, study sessions or, or some other order of business.
Right, and study sessions are something that the commission can decide to, to convene.
Correct.
So you will be polling availability for Board of Adjustment meeting and for Planning Commission study session?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more general business? All right, then I would just say thank you very much, everybody. This meeting is concluded at 10:44 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Nice to see you all.
Good to see everybody.